Welcome, everybody. Ally.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Morning, everyone.
Good morning.
We're going to get started. Welcome to the Insurance and Real Estate Committee's Public Hearing for Thursday, February 26, 2025. Any opening remarks? If not, we will jump right into it. Our first speaker, we do have some people that are running late, so we're going to go to number three, Nathan Tinker from Connecticut Pharmacists Association. Nathan, you're up.
Don't write in the fire. Okay. Good morning, co-chairs, Representative Wood and Senator Cabrera, vice chairs, Representative Berry and Senator Anwar, ranking members, Representative Pavlov, Tomato and Senator Huang, and distinguished members of the Insurance and Real Estate Committee. My name is Nathan Tinker and I'm the CEO of the Connecticut Pharmacists Association, and I'm here today representing both the Connecticut Pharmacists Association and the Connecticut Society of Health System Pharmacists. We appreciate the opportunity to discuss the role pharmacists can play in improving healthcare and access in the state of Connecticut. Over the past few years, Connecticut has been proactive in authorizing pharmacists to provide critical clinical services, including prescribing hormonal and emergency contraceptives, offering HIV testing and treatment, and prescribing and administering all approved and authorized vaccines. Yet, unlike other healthcare providers offering the same services, pharmacists are not paid. They have no pathway to be reimbursed for those services, neither through Medicaid nor through commercial insurance. Without reimbursement, pharmacies, pharmacies struggle to sustain these services and patients face unnecessary barriers to care. As a result, Connecticut finds itself alongside South Dakota and Alabama as three of only eight states that have failed to establish reimbursement for at least one pharmacist-provided clinical service. This failure places our state behind many others, including Mississippi, Kentucky, and Texas, in ensuring patients can efficiently access healthcare through their local pharmacy. Additionally, a recent report estimates that Connecticut will need some 5,700 more healthcare providers by 2028, a gap that can be reduced with the help of pharmacists, and we should be leading in this pursuit, not lagging in patient access and affordability. HB 7039 requires a group of state agencies to conduct a study of compensation practices for healthcare services provided by pharmacists. But the fact is that we already know what the findings will be, and Connecticut does not need to start from scratch. In my written testimony, I've listed out a number of legislative and administrative authorities that other states have put in place over the last 15 years. Alaska, for instance, has been reimbursing pharmacists for, since at least 2015, Washington since about 2013. So it's been quite a while. Maryland and Delaware both just passed and implemented reimbursement under commercial and Medicaid plans in just the last couple of years. It is a growing trend and one that is broadly already done. Some 42 states as or pay for reimbursed pharmacists for these services. Fair reimbursement incentivizes pharmacists to dedicate time and resources to these high-impact services, and given these findings, Connecticut policymakers should not delay in such reimbursement, should not delay. Reimbursement ensures that pharmacies can sustain and expand these services, improving access and reducing the burden on emergency rooms and overbooked physician's offices. While HB 7039 is a step in the right direction, we already know what the findings will show. Forty-two states have already demonstrated that reimbursing pharmacists improves access, enhances patient outcomes, and saves healthcare dollars. Rather than another study, a multidisciplinary working group focused on policy implementation could be more efficient, more cost-effective, and more timely. However, if HB 7039 is the best available pathway at this time, we strongly urge you to support it with the goal of enacting real reforms that ensure fair reimbursement for pharmacist services in Connecticut. Patients deserve high-quality care, and pharmacists are ready to provide it if given the necessary tools. And just a couple of points to help support that. Comptroller Scanlon, a few weeks ago, held a roundtable with students from UConn and USJ in the schools of pharmacy and asked them about what the major barriers to them maintaining, staying in the workforce in Connecticut were. And the first thing they said was reimbursement. They can go to other states nearby and be reimbursed for practices and services that they cannot get here, be so here in the state of Connecticut. So if we're looking to sustain the workforce, if we're looking to grow and fill that hole of 5,700 healthcare providers in the next few years, this is a great way to do that and a great place to start. Additionally, if you think about it, if you have pharmacies being reimbursed for these services, you have almost instantly created potentially 600 or more new points of access for hormonal contraceptives, for HIV-PEP and PrEP, for vaccines across the state of Connecticut. But they're not going to do it unless there is a reimbursement model to make that happen. Thank you for the opportunity to talk. Be happy to take any questions you might have.
Thank you very much for being here, Nathan. I do want to push back a little bit on your testimony. We don't know how to implement this program if we were to pass a law tomorrow. That's what the nature of the working group is. You and I had met offline on this, and I asked multiple questions about like how this works as a point-of-sale. So the working group or a study, and I'm fine doing a working group. So if that's something that you're more comfortable doing and you think that's the best bang for the buck, I'm, I'm happy to change, to change the language. But given the market that we regulate being fully insured versus self, you know, you know, insured, there's a lot of challenges on how to roll something like this out that we need to get to the bottom of before we write the statute.
I agree, and I think that, that, you know, other states have had that same issue, right? And they've gone about it in different ways. Some have done it simply through administrative processes, others through legislation. There are ways to address that and to get to that point. But I agree, the, the implementation is the key issue, and how do you make sure that it works for everyone?
Yep. So I do appreciate your testimony, the time you've spent with me, educating me about this process, and I'm happy to support the working group model to come up with a better way of coming up with a solution so that in the next legislative session, we have a better roadmap to hit the ground running.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you very much for your time, Nathan. Next up, we have James Berliner, followed by Sue Halpin.
Good morning, Chairpersons Wood and Cabrera, ranking members Pavlov, Tomato, and Huang, and members of the committee. My name is Jim Berliner, and I'm a licensed insurance broker with Berliner, Gelfen, and Company, based in Monroe. I appreciate the opportunity to speak in support of HB 6981, which would remove the three declination requirement for placing risks in the non-admitted marketplace when done through an unaffiliated surplus lines broker. I'm here today to support the changes in how insurance is placed with non-admitted carriers in this state. Under current law, I typically need to obtain three declinations from admitted carriers before I can place coverage with a non-admitted carrier. This is a vestige of a bygone era. I've been doing this a long time. And when my, when I started my career several decades ago, eligibility was found in loose-leaf notebooks that were updated monthly from carriers. Eligibility is now found online. I can go online and within minutes know if one of my contracted carriers, admitted, is interested in obtaining a piece of business. If they're not, I can see it right there in front of me. So I want to make three reasonably quick points. The very existence of the diligent effort, formerly the affidavit, lends to a perception or arises out of the perception of either an inferior product and/or excessive premium. I would tell you that a non-admitted carrier is not necessarily either one of those. There are many times when a non-admitted carrier is going to be a primary, most competitive, and provide the broadest policy for many types of insurance. So what comes to mind immediately is management liability, which would include coverages such as directors and officers, employment practices liability, fiduciary liability, subcrime, cyber liability. If obtaining the diligent effort, which, by the way, the, the, the insurance purchaser doesn't necessarily even see unless the insurance producer presents it to them during the proposal process, if that's an incentive to place business in an admitted marketplace, the incentive already exists without it. So I'll give you two points to that, that incentive. One of those is the time involved in placing business with a non-admitted market is an incredible multiple of the time involved in placing business in one of your primary standard markets. And by that, I mean one of my contracted carriers. I could go through the steps, but I'm sure I'd bore you with that. Also, sometimes a non-admitted carrier is the only availability of certain types of insurance and/or for certain risks. I don't need to call my insurance carriers and say, hey, I've got a house with a broken window and some bad front steps. Do you want to accept that? I know they're not going to. So doing that is now becomes really, for me, an impediment of doing business. And if my client is in a rush to receive a quote, now it's going to stand in, it's going to get in the way of providing that quote on a timely basis. And yes, people do call the day before and/or the day of insurance is lapsing and want to see some type of quote.
Your three-minute drop, if you could please summarize.
There's, I think those are the, the, the most important points I want to make. Now, I'd be happy to answer any questions about the process that I involve. Incredibly burdensome, looking to have it waived. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. So pretend we're a regulator. The regulators believe that the three declinations are in the best interest of the consumer.
Excuse me, are what?
Are in the best interest of the consumer. So they're looking at this as a, you know, consumer protection mechanism. You've hit on some points of timeliness, you know, that people want, you know, something faster. So the three, you know, becomes a burden. But tell us some other ways that the consumers are still protected under this streamlining language.
The consumer is protected because where my incentive would ordinarily be to do one of two things for the consumer. I'm sorry, my carriers don't want to write your insurance. There's a problem for whatever reason. And that incentive is further enhanced by, in the back of my mind, oh, my goodness, I'm just not going to spend the time on this. I don't have the time to spend on this. And the renewal process is so incredibly cumbersome, we can choose the business we write. As a producer, I may choose to say, I'm sorry, but, you know, there are other producers out there that can handle this. This is not something I choose to handle.
So we're basically, you're saying this language is giving, you know, is being nimble along with the consumer needs, being able to serve, you know, this niche kind of, you know, request in a way that still, you know, you know, gives them the protection that we can all feel reassured about if we do this language.
So I'm not sure, when you talk about the protection to the consumer, I think that goes back to the point I made, that there's this perception that if you're with a non-admitted carrier, that's a bad thing, which I don't believe is necessarily true. I understand they're not protected by the Connecticut Guaranty Association. Personally speaking, as a business owner, I've got to vet the company that I placed my client's insurance with. I'm not going to place them with a company that I feel is maybe financially unstable or on the way down, or has had, had a recent downgrade in rating. So my incentive is to provide the best thing I can, regardless of the necessity of getting this, of getting the three declinations.
That, that makes sense. I appreciate your feedback on that. Any questions from the committee? Seeing none, thank you so much for your testimony today.
Thanks for the opportunity.
Next up, we have Sue Halpin, followed by Mark Spelman.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Susan Halpin, and I'm here today on behalf of the Connecticut Association of Health Plans, representing Aetna, Anthem, Cigna, Connecticut Care, and United. We've submitted several pieces of legislation, not legislation, I wish, several pieces of testimony to you today. I'm just going to highlight a few pieces for you today. We are here in opposition to a couple of sections in 7039, and also, we are neutral on a couple of sections of 7039, and we are actually very much in support of Section 10 of 7039. Section 10 in particular revises the clinical peer definition that was passed last year. We had concerns, and the proponents were gracious enough to extend the effective date by one year to allow us continued time to talk through the issues. I want to thank Brett Kupfer and Senate Dems for convening us over the interim. We have had good conversations. I can't say that the language before you today is fully consensus, but I can say that we support it. And if I looked at the testimony online correctly, I think there's some other support for it. Last year, the legislation removed the term "similar" from the definition of clinical peer so that it only reads "same." And that'll have a significant impact on the ability of health plans to quickly move through the utilization review process, and also to, it'll also result in increased premiums. We do have concerns with Section 1 of the bill, which is around recoupment policies. I only point out that Connecticut has a robust set of statutes already on this process, and we have provided the correct statutory sites for you. And I just want to say that the ability to recoup claims, it reduces fraud, ensures accurate payments within the system, and it can free up resources for legitimate claims, ensuring that patients receive the coverage that they're entitled to. So I would caution you, moving forward, in terms of the studies in here, we have offered background for the committee's context, but we are neutral on the prospect of the studies that are included. Just to highlight very quickly, I know I'm running out of time, Ally. Couple of things, again, 7040 is a study on life-saving medical treatment services. Again, we have shared with the committee just background in terms of the study itself. We are neutral on that, but thought it would be helpful if you had the statutory sites, et cetera. We are very much in favor of 6981 and Section 2, which is the provisions allowing for paperless communications. To date, over 20 states have adopted policies of this nature. We think it's a win-win, and that digital health plan management offers a more efficient, secure, user-friendly, and environmentally-friendly process for all. So we urge your support. And then finally, I know you're going to be having testimony from others, so I won't go into detail, but we are opposed to Senate Bill 1366. We believe it removes options from the marketplace in the way that employers manage their pharmacy benefits. So thank you for the opportunity to comment, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Sue. Can, on the clinical peer language, that has been negotiated between all parties at this point?
It has not. We have had discussions around it, and I think we all agreed that this was the version to put forward for a public hearing, but conversations are continuing. Having said that, the association supports the language that is before you.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. And on the paperless language, just so that we have it on the record, if anyone wants paper, can they still get paper?
Yes. They can opt out of the provision. The bill allows the plan sponsor to opt into a paperless system. They know their own employees. They know what they're able, but they'll be offered the opportunity to opt out of that at any time.
And when you say anytime, they can go paperless if they want to, they can opt back into paper for a time period. They could go back and, I mean, it can change at any point, correct?
The any point I will check on, but that, that is the, that is the intent behind the language, is to allow people to opt in and opt out. There may be some issues about when exactly that has to happen or how much notice has to be given, but happy to work with you on that.
Great. And on the health insurance, and that concerning health insurance, 7039, the recouping of payments, I think is, I think, limited to two years. What is the timeframe now?
Let me just, I think I have it in here. I believe it's 18 months currently. So actually, I think the statute that's in place today is more restrictive than what's proposed under the bill.
Okay, great. Thank you for those questions. Any other questions from the committee? Seeing none, I, we appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have Mark Spelman, followed by Gus Campos.
I'm here. I hope you hear me. Good morning, Representative Wood. Good to see you. I'm here testifying on behalf of the Connecticut Psychological Association. I'm Mark Spelman. I'm a psychologist in practice in New Fairfield. I'm here in support of Section 1 of that bill that was just discussed, 7039. And I was interested to hear the testimony because our understanding is that clawbacks are allowed for five years. I think we'd be pretty happy if we were wrong about that and clawbacks are limited to 18 months. So I guess that's a point of clarification. I've just been reading a recent survey that the social workers did in the Connecticut Mirror reporting that we have a five-year clawback window. So I suppose this is a point that needs to be clarified. In the meantime, we consider that clawbacks are an everybody-lose situation. Psychologists, social workers, we never know when we're going to get hit with one. We have to repay it. Our patients are long gone and couldn't have afforded out-of-network treatment in the first place. It's the number-one reason we leave panels. It's the reason 23% of social workers leave panels is because they're afraid of clawbacks. That limits access. That, in turn, actually ultimately increases insurance company costs, because research has repeatedly shown that when people go to therapy, their medical bills go down. I understand that there's a difference of opinion on what the statute is, and that would resolve a lot of this. I know there's also been the point made that if we pass legislation limiting clawbacks, it will only affect less than half of Connecticut plans, because many are self-insured and not state-regulated. But we've talked with other state associations, and their experience has been that when they limit clawbacks to companies that are regulated by their state, the rest of the plans go along, probably because it's not worth it to have multiple systems. So we think it's worth it for multiple reasons. Any progress is good. We think insurance companies in general would all follow limits that are regulated by the state, and it would make us feel like at least something is being done for what is the number-one unpredictable, uncontrollable stressor we face that's driving us out of network. I have included my survey from the Connecticut Psychological Association in my written testimony. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Mark, we appreciate you being here. Any questions from the committee? Representative Nuccio.
Hello, sir. I have a question. I'm hoping maybe you can answer. Are you, are you looking in the clawbacks? Are you separating out Medicaid or Medicare from commercial, or is this five-year that you're seeing in commercial, fully insured, payable clients?
I wish I knew the answer to that question. I can find out and get it back. I can tell you, we almost never get clawbacks from Medicare and Medicaid. And there's really one particular insurance plan that is giving us most of our clawbacks. So one reason I don't know much about Medicare and Medicaid clawbacks is they hardly ever happen.
See, I actually got information that was different than that. Most of the people that reach out to me about clawbacks, when we look into it, it ends up being a Medicaid account. So that's why I'm asking, because...
I bet that's because that's something you can help them with. I would send a patient to you for a Medicaid clawback.
Yeah. So I guess that's what I'm trying to figure out, because if it's 18 months already and we're asking for two years, but I have heard the five years, but, but I'm trying to differentiate between Medicaid, Medicare, commercial, fully insured, and ASO, because unfortunately, they're all different. So thank you for that information. If you can find out in...
I will. I appreciate the question. We need to know that, too. I will get back to you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's not often we, we have, we send people home to get homework. That, that's...
I deserve it.
Hi. Thank you for being here. I was wondering, can you describe the process for appealing a clawback?
Appears he, he left. We might have lost him.
Okay, we, we'll ask a, a future speaker that. That's a great question. Thank you. We're going to go to Senator Kathy Austin, who was first on the list.
So good morning. Thank you very much for giving me an opportunity to speak to you today. I've never been first on the list since I've been here, so I was a little surprised. So first of all, I want to thank the committee for doing a really great study. I was happy to be part of a task force that looked at insurances broadly and what we put on there. And so I'm sure that's also going to lead to a couple of my comments here. So I've been looking at getting insurances to cover PKU, and don't ask me to say the formal name of it, because I can't. And also, having, so PKU is a disease that if some, if a child is born with PKU, they need to have certain foods in order to not have the consequences of PKU untreated, which is coming, is becoming intellectually disabled, not even being born that way, but because of PKU. And treating somebody with the correct foods and other medications and having that covered by health insurance would certainly help out families. I have a family in Norwich who had, all of their children had PKU, and so this is something that I've been working on for a while. Quite frankly, I've also been working on another issue on motorized wheelchairs. I had a business owner who owned a pawn shop, and he would take in motorized wheelchairs, fix them, and then dispense them to people that needed them. And the reason, and I'd also like to see us cover better, the, having health insurers cover motorized wheelchairs. Now, as a result of, of the ACA and other, anything that goes on is covered, has to be covered by the state. We've often had a practice and a policy of covering that through the insurance fund. That's not what I'm suggesting here. I'm suggesting that the general fund pick up the costs if this should come to a vote. So I wanted to make that very clear, that I'm not asking for the, the insurance fund to cover any additional costs that we put on. I'm actually very much in favor of another bill that you have, and that is a five-year rollout of removing some of the costs that were put on the insurance fund that, as a result of financial difficulties the state was having. We don't have those difficulties anymore, and I'd like us to revert back to having the general fund cover those costs so that it's not going on to an individual's insurance policy and going on an ever smaller number of people on insurance policies. You guys dragged me into insurance. I, I was kicking and screaming. I I was kicking and screaming the whole way, but you forced me into this. I I very much blame a couple of people. I won't call them out publicly, but you know, I've actually learned an awful lot about it and I appreciate the knowledge that I've been able to receive as a result of this. But I'm still working on these issues because they directly impact a lot of people that I know. Now, PKU is a is something that happens on only one in about 10,000 to 15,000 people, but it does have a dramatic impact on the families that are dealing with those consequences. Those that need motorized wheelchairs are actually larger numbers than that. And a lot of times, insurance companies don't like to cover getting those motorized wheelchairs, and they'll often give just a standard wheelchair. But many people don't have the upper body strength to use the non-motorized wheelchairs in a way that gives them comfort to be out in public to take care of things that they need to do. So that's why I've been pushing for this. And it's not just, and it was Phil Pavone, not not even one of my constituents, his business was in my district, but that worked on this and found so many people that whose lives changed as a result of doing this work. And he put out thousands of wheelchairs and he paid for the battery to to do this and worked with people. Then he got so engaged in this business, he actually was able to work with a couple of other companies that helped out with vans that would assist people who had people. So he was a very dedicated man. He's since become ill himself and been unable to continue with the work. So I continue in his name to push for us getting motorized wheelchairs covered in a more comprehensive fashion through insurance companies. But I am more than willing to have the the State General Fund as Chair of Appropriations figuring out a way to move both move some of the costs off insurance companies and coming before you on an issue like this, saying that this should be covered by the state. It's a it's a good public policy to cover both of these and and I'm interested in getting that through. So again, thank you very much for letting me testify today.
Uh, thank you for being here, Senator Austin, and thank you for your work with the Insurance Fund Working Group. We will be hearing that bill next week. And as you know, we could save customers of all insurance products thousands of dollars a year by implementing the recommendations of the insurance fund. So thank you for working with us on that. I wanted to ask you about PKU food. If we are able to, if a family is able to get that to a a child at a young age, are we preventing longer term, more expensive medical issues from happening?
Yes. So someone that has PKU can end up with intellectual disabilities, seizures, behavioral problems or mental, mental health disorders. And that's well documented, but simply providing them with a diet that pushes a cudgel in between that interaction helps them stem stems them from having that those consequences of having PKU. And it's bad enough having one child with this rare disease. This family had all of their children born with the consequences of PKU and worked very hard and their children are successful as a result of of having. The they were able to through means of of covering the expenses at the expense of other things. So not being able to, you know, enjoy a greater quality of life, but their quality of life was enhanced by covering their children's food necessities. Other people have not been able to do that.
Is the PKU food for a certain period of time? Is it is it like, you know, up until age 10 or 15? Or is it for the rest of their lives?
Generally, the rest of their lives is a general means, but usually through the developmental years, which would be into their late teens, early twenties.
Uh, thank you for that clarification. Any other questions? Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for letting me testify again. Appreciate it.
Next up, we have Gus Campos, followed by Alan Joseph. Gus, can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair, Senators, House Representative members and everybody present. My name is Gus Campos. I am a pharmacist and pharmacist owner in Bristol, Connecticut. I'm going to be making it kind of brief. I will start by saying that the heart of this bill and every other bill, the underlying reason it's written is to protect the people. The 70-year-old with a heart condition, the three-year-old with a ear infection, the 20-year-old with COVID, these and the millions of other Connecticut residents is why these bills are written. We must protect the interest of our patients. They cannot and should not lose the simple ability of choice. Many PBMs have a vice grip on contracts, doctors, formularies, which limits choices to patients at all levels. A simple choice of what pharmacy a patient can shop at is now being controlled by PBMs. In June of 2024, all my Access Health customers were no longer allowed to shop at my store. That's called patient steering. Some patients said they would rather not take their meds than to go to the big box chain pharmacy that was now their preferred pharmacy. Those customers are at a much higher risk of being non-adherent and ending up in a hospital setting. If improved healthcare is what we are after, then simple choices need to be provided to all residents of Connecticut. Transparency is at the heart of this bill, and I think it should be the focus in this bill and all future bills. Thank you.
Thank you, Gus, for your testimony. Can you just give us a little bit more detail? Why why were your Access Health customers steered towards a different pharmacy?
Uh, PBMs can change contracts on a dime and without us knowing, all of a sudden, it is changed and all of a sudden, they no longer can attend our pharmacy or shop at our pharmacy. It is something that I have zero control over. It's what they they do, and that's that's what happens. So the PBM that manages the Access Health insurances took the liberty of changing the contract, and now all of those customers could no longer shop at my store.
Thank you for that. Any other questions from the committee? Gus, thanks for joining us today.
Thank you very much.
Alan Joseph, followed by Jacob Marandino.
Hello, co-chairs, ranking members and members of the Joint Insurance and Retail Estate Committee. My name is Alan Joseph, and I'm from Farmington. I'm with two of my peers from the UConn School of Pharmacy. We'd like to share our comments about Bill seven oh three nine, section nine with you.
Hello and good morning. My name is Armand Fabrizi, and I'm from Stratford. I'm a second-year doctor of pharmacy candidate at the UConn School of Pharmacy, and I'll graduate in May 2027. I currently work as a pharmacy intern at Rite Aid in Fairfield and at Bridgeport Hospital. Pharmacist training at UConn is a six-year-long doctoral program culminating in a PharmD degree, which involves extensive clinical training in community pharmacies, clinics, hospitals, et cetera. And establishing reimbursement rates for pharmacist clinical services could draw more young, young people in the professional pharmacy to practice here in Connecticut. Upon graduation, it is very important for me to be able to practice at the top of my license and taking a more actionable approach to Bill seven zero three nine, section nine, and reforming payment policies will ensure pharmacists receive reimbursement for patient services they provide.
I'm a second-year doctor of pharmacy candidate. I work as a pharmacy intern at a CVS in Southington and the VA clinic in Newington. With respect to pharmacist reimbursement for clinical services, Connecticut lags behind other states. We are only one of seven states and Washington DC that does not pay for pharmacist healthcare services. Just last month, I attended a national pharmacy convention in Florida with pharmacy students from all across the country. They were proudly discussing that pharmacists in their states are reimbursed for their healthcare services. I would like to practice in Connecticut, but why should I stay when my education, expertise and clinical services in many states have payment parity with other clinicians? Rather than do a study, I'm hopeful that a work group can be formed so pharmacist reimbursement will become a reality.
My name is Mia Atala. I'm a third-year doctor of pharmacy candidate at the UConn School of Pharmacy, and I live in stores. As I approach graduation in May 2026 and will soon enter the workforce, I am passionate about pharmacy payment reform and urge you to support the premise of this bill as it will benefit patients and population health. As seen during the pandemic, pharmacists are among the most accessible health professionals, and our expertise in pharmacotherapy management heavily contributes to interdisciplinary team-based care. Investing in pharmacists means investing in better patient outcomes, improved medication access and preventive care measures. By recognizing the vital role pharmacists play in patient care, we can bridge gaps and take a crucial step toward enhancing public health in our communities. Thank you.
Well, I I appreciate you being here. I love the perspective of, you know, students. Thank you for sharing with us like how long it takes. I loved hearing all the different places that you guys are currently working. Is it working for pay in internship? What is it that you're doing now?
I'm so there's a couple of different ways in which I work in pharmacy practice. The first is my paid job. So both at CVS and at the VA, I get paid for what I do. But part of the program is going into what we call experiential education. So we go out to community pharmacy settings, including independent pharmacies, Walgreens, CVSs, anything that's community, and healthcare systems. And we work for about a month as P1s and P2 students, so our juniors and seniors in UConn, and we go out and work for free. Our last year of pharmacy school, we're out in practice and all different types of settings, industry, community pharmacies, hospitals, and we're working for for free. And and it's just a 10-month-long rotation.
Uh, do you find that you build a relationship with clients when you're in a pharmacy setting? Like, do you feel there's a a trust being built there?
I would definitely say so. I work in an independent pharmacy, and with that, you get more of a closer relationship with whether it be clients or patients. It's important that you invest in the patient's healthcare. It's not just about us pharmacists dispensing medication. You want to be able to help manage that, catch anything from when they visit their primary care physician, going through their medication list, making sure that we have the correct information and we have the best plan for that patient's, whether it be chronic disease or what.
I would like to add saying that that relationship between the pharmacist and the patient is is changing and it's only getting more close and more trustworthy, especially considering the fact that a pharmacist really is a provider in some settings at the moment. Now, we're not recognized as providers by the state, but that provider type setting is seen in hospitals and now in community pharmacies, now that we can prescribe oral contraceptives. And so being in that type of provider type role, that trust is very important, but I would like Connecticut pharmacists to stay here and work at the top of their license. But I don't see how that's feasible if, you know, we're not getting paid.
Yeah, you you guys make great points. I'd love if we do move forward with the working group, if we have your perspective in that because you're, you know, the diversity in the places that you're either working or volunteering would bring a lot of value to that discussion. So let's just make sure that we keep working together.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Great, thank you so much for your time today.
Thank you.
Uh, Jacob Marandino, followed by Ben Shaken.
Co-chairs, Representative Wood, Senator Cabrera, and members of the Insurance and Real Estate Committee. My name is Jacob Marandino. I live in Hampden, Connecticut, and I'm here today to voice my strong support for section six and the statement of purpose of for House Bill number seven zero three nine, which would limit healthcare carriers from recovering their lobbying and legislative action costs through health insurance premiums. As someone living with an autoimmune disease, I know firsthand the emotional and financial burdens that come with navigating our healthcare system. Every year, our my family and I spend thousands of dollars out of pocket just to access the treatment that I need to survive. In August of 2024, I experienced a devastating delay in treatment after switching insurance companies and was not able to access the medications that I need and the healthcare that I needed. I while I waited for insurance approval. As a result of this obstacle, my symptoms worsened and there was a point which I had to decide to go to the hospital and receive a transfusion of the same medication that I had previously been able to administer myself at home. I believe that it's unfair for patients like me who struggle to afford the necessary care and face delays in treatment while health insurance companies are using our premiums to pay for lobbying causes that may not necessarily be in our best interest. Our health insurance premium should pay for healthcare and not the lobbying efforts of the healthcare industry. I believe that every dollar that goes towards corporate lobbying is a dollar not spent on patient care, and I urge this committee to stand with patients over corporate interests and support the section six in the statement of purpose for House Bill seven zero three nine to ensure that health carriers no longer pass these lobbying expenses onto consumers. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you for being here today and sharing your story with us. Any questions from the committee? Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next up, we have Ben Shaken, followed by Sam Abdalani.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the committee. My name is Ben Shaken. I work at the Connecticut Community Nonprofit Alliance. The alliance is the statewide Association of Community Nonprofits, who, as you know, provide services to more than half a million Connecticut residents. They also employ 118,000 people in the state. I'm here to testify in support of Senate Bill 1322. I'm not going to read the full title, but it's the bill dealing with liability and in property casualty insurance for nonprofits. I want to thank the committee for raising this important bill. We are hearing from our members that some community nonprofits are facing a an insurance crisis. Many of them are being quoted very, very significant increases in their liability, their business insurance, property insurance policies. Some of them have been dropped from these policies altogether and that there is a significant lack of providers in the Connecticut marketplace or in the marketplace in general that are willing to ensure the programs that they provide. And these are the state's health and human services providers. These is the safety net of services available to Connecticut residents. We're talking about foster care services, services for people with intellectual and developmental disabilities, behavioral health services, residential and clinical services alike. We did a survey last year of our members and found that a significant number of them are reporting larger-than-normal increases in their insurance costs. This is happening to everyone, but it's affecting these programs because of the nature of the services that they're providing specifically. Related specifically to liability insurance, more than half of our of our members report that their carriers have requested significant increases in the cost of insurance, and 20% have had carriers threaten to drop some or all of their programs entirely. About 10%, just under 10% have actually been dropped from coverage. Just a couple of examples that we have, one nonprofit that serves people with ADD, they as a result have a fleet of vehicles that they use to transport those people to and from work and community activities every day. Their their rate for vehicle insurance after a claim rose from $31,000 a year to more than $300,000 a year. Their liability insurance also rode by 46%. Another provider reports that their insurance has threatened to drop their entire organization from coverage if they accept clients that that present with a certain clinical diagnosis. They serve adults with mental illness in in. They serve adults with mental illness and and their insurance carrier has told them they're not allowed to accept any other clients that have a history of starting fires. Yet, DMIS, which is their funding state agency, continues to refer those clients to their programs. They they need community placements for for those folks. This is a very recent example. Another provider reports having been dropped entirely altogether from their carrier because they provide foster care services for for DCF. They provide a whole host of different services for kids with behavioral health needs from special education to residential services to one of the major state providers of foster care services. And so it, you know, goes without saying, without liability insurance, nonprofits can't operate their programs. The state which funds these programs has not increased their funding to meet these increased insurance costs. And so if a resolution to this issue is not achieved, the state agencies that rely on these nonprofits to deliver services will be in a crisis as providers are are forced to drop out of service provision altogether, particularly with certain very high need clients. So this bill does a few different things that we hope will combat this issue. The first is that it directs the insurance department to look into creating a captive insurance program for nonprofits where they can pool their risks together, an insurance program that would exist for the purpose of ensuring these programs, which are admittedly risky.
Your three minutes are up. If you could please summarize.
Thanks. And and it also has some language in it that we hope will limit the liability of nonprofits to what they can control, to negligence that may happen in their organizations, but to not have them be liable for negligence on behalf of the state or other third parties. So thanks again for your time and consideration for raising this important bill. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thanks for being here, Ben, and giving testimony. I feel like we've been talking about this issue for far too long and I keep hearing the same stories year over year, these increases from twenty or thirty thousand to two hundred to three hundred thousand. And just to reiterate, you're basically here saying that when those increases happen or when they are dropped, they're just stopping those services, whether it's transportation or a program or.
I think they're in danger of stopping them. I'm not sure that they've, I'm not sure that anyone has has stopped a service yet. I think the the kind of nature of this marketplace is that is that providers are are forced to to sort of go back into a market and find insurance substantially more expensive. I think they're in danger, particularly for folks that are being told, we're not going to insure these programs anymore. There have been some 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 changes outside of our control as providers, outside of the state's control that have probably been leading some insurance carriers to to make these decisions, some changes in federal law related to liability for children serving programs and other things. But nevertheless, there's obviously a need for these programs to continue in the state. And so we are very concerned that, you know, we hear from our members, there's one, maybe two companies in the country that will write a policy on these programs. And if you lose one, then you're down to one. And if you lose that one, then you're down to nothing. And there really isn't a solution. So we're here to ask, hopefully we can intervene now to prevent that from happening.
Yeah, for sure. We definitely want to do that. The the captive model, just just so you know, we would have to provide a funding source for that. So that's going to be competing with, you know, your requests for funding sources, which are, you know, above and beyond as important as this. So we're just going to have to be partners, you know, in our, you know, request in trying to find a funding source for that. But I think it's a worthy goal. So let's just make sure we continue, you know, to talk to talk about that. And also, are you having your members report some of these very high increases to the Department of Insurance just so that they have a record of 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 what's going on?
Yes, and I think there have been some reports that they've received, although you'd have to ask them directly.
Yep.
I I believe that that this is something that folks are reaching out to. The the way that our our members sort of interact with the state generally is, you know, they're really providing these services on behalf of the state agencies that are in charge of, that oversee the human services system in Connecticut. And so they're often in very, very close contact with their funding state agencies. And so I think to your to your point about a funding source and and making sure that the issues are getting sort of into the proper places within state government, I think it's also an important, it's going to be important to bring in agencies like DCF, DDS, DMIS, OPM even that oversees this procurement system, to have them sort of be part of the conversations, not just between, you know, this committee and the insurance department, which is which is your purview, but with these other agencies that that ultimately their charge in state statute is to is to make sure that services are available to the people that they that they have cognizance over that, that they rely on nonprofits to provide.
Yeah, I agree. I think that's a great next step. So we will make sure that we coordinate that. Any other questions? Representative Nuccio.
Hi, Ben. So I'm trying to get the lay of the land here. And I guess, are are you suggesting that the state pay for the insurance?
I think the reason that the the we that we asked for the bill to include, to to sort of ask the insurance department to start figuring it out is we're not a hundred percent sure what exactly the the first step needs to be. I think in theory, a captive would need some some dollars in order to to begin, but could then sustain itself in some way moving forward. Our members are currently paying for insurance. We're not suggesting that they stop paying for insurance, that the state just provide it. You know, we we could have proposed that they are lumped in with the state and its sovereign immunity, those kinds of things, but that seemed too extreme. But but when we look at a marketplace that's significantly constricted in terms of what's available, the captive is a is an attractive, is an attractive idea because we acknowledge that 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 the programs that our members are providing are are, you know, deal with people who 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 are who are risky, they're they're high need individuals with high levels of medical and behavioral acuity. And 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 so it seemed like a place that we could go to to come up with a solution that might work.
So, yeah, I think as Rep. Wood said, you know, the captives have to be funded, like the captive that we currently have, like for crumbling foundations. Now, we put bonding money in that and there's a charge on all the homeowners. So there would definitely have to be some sort of payment stream to this. And and far and as far as the plans that are being canceled, is it because it's a risky population? Are there higher claims there? Like, is is that what's driving it? Because that's kind of hard if you have high claims and then you get a high increase, you know,
Yeah.
to say that, you know, it's, how do you, how do you justify that over anybody else's?
Yeah, I I don't, I don't think, I don't think so. So so two things. First, back to the to the captive. You're correct. I think we we would, we would look to this committee and others in the legislature to figure out, at least in initial funding stream, I think, different than the crumbling foundation captive. And I live in Eastern Connecticut, so I'm a potential beneficiary of it. Thank, hopefully not. It's not, this would be something that that an ongoing funding stream, we would anticipate, would be our members continuing to pay liability premiums rather than potentially, you know, assessing a fee. I don't pay, as a homeowner, I don't, outside of this fee that everyone pays, I don't, I don't hold a separate captive insurance policy because I live in Eastern Connecticut. That's not how that one is is set up. So your second question about claims, I think we are hearing kind of both. Although we haven't heard from anyone who's having like an abnormal claims experience where they have a bad year, where they've got ten car accidents or something along those lines and they get dropped. What we're hearing is, hey, we had some normal issues, some things that businesses that we've experienced year after year. Lots of nonprofits have experienced year after year, but for some reason, all of a sudden, our normal year where maybe we had one or two claims on this large policy is, it has caused this massive increase in in our premium, when in the past that hasn't been the case. And then the second thing that we're hearing is that this is happening without any claims experience at all. And so the foster care provider, for example, that I that I referenced, they didn't have any claims on their liability policy. They haven't had any claims in recent history related to the services that they're providing. And yet the whatever insurer they're using has said, look, we're getting out of the foster care business. We just aren't comfortable with the risk that that these programs represent. And there've been cases in other states that have paid out with other clients, even just generally in in the world. And so we're not going to write you a policy next year. Good luck. And and so I think it's kind of, it's both, frankly. There there's some folks that have had some minor claims or what I would say are sort of normal claims on their policy and then folks that have had no issues but are still being told like, we've evaluated this, you know, this this book of business and we're getting out of the marketplace.
Okay, thank you very much.
I don't see any other questions. Thanks for being here, Ben.
Thanks very much. Have a great day.
Next, we have Sam Abdalani followed by Rachel Cottle-Latham. Oh, Sam remote, so is he not on? Okay, Rachel Cottle-Latham followed by Bella Wu Akawawu. And I apologize for not pronouncing that correctly.
Market-based, thank you, reforms that realign PBM incentives, enhance transparency and address diseases that contribute to rising costs for Connecticut patients. Today, PBMs administer prescription drug benefits for over two hundred and seventy five million Americans. And after years of significant consolidation, the PBM industry has become dominated by a small number of large companies. Here in Connecticut, the three largest PBMs account for eighty four percent of commercially insured lives. And this market concentration and increasingly significant ownership overlap between PBMs, insurers, pharmacies and providers allows PBMs to exercise enormous influence over patients' access to medicines, including which medicines are covered, where and when they can be dispensed or administered, and how much patients must pay out of pocket. For example, through this vertical integration, they're able to create coverage networks that steer patients to the pharmacies that they own, regardless of what is best or most convenient for patients. And we heard testimony to this effect earlier today. Senate Bill thirteen sixty six takes important steps to hold PBMs accountable to some of these practices. We support this bill because it would de-link PBM compensation from the price of medicine. Opponents of this bill will contend that manufacturers set the list price and that this is the problem. But a growing share of PBM compensation is now tied to the list price of medicines, which experts note can distort the market by incentivizing PBMs to prefer medicines with higher list prices and large rebates over lower cost alternatives. PBMs can earn more on this greater spread. And the Health and Human Services Office of Inspector General has indicated that PBMs may have incentives to penalize manufacturers for reducing list prices, including removing medicines from the formulary. Although PBM compensation models have shifted in recent years, with PBMs increasingly generating profits from fees, these fees have typically remained tied to list prices. To the extent that PBMs provide valuable services to shareholders in the supply chain, they should be entitled to compensation based on that value. But PBM compensation should not be tied to the price of medicine. We strongly support the enhanced rebate reporting provisions in Senate Bill thirteen sixty six, which will enable policymakers to be sure patients are not paying more than insurers and PBMs for their medicines. Pharma is concerned that the approximately three hundred and forty four billion dollars in rebates and discounts offered by manufacturers in two thousand and twenty three are not making their way to patients at the pharmacy counter. We also support the remaining provisions of the bill, which would prohibit spread pricing and enact PBM duties. But in the interest of time, I'll refer you to my written testimony for added detail. And in conclusion, we thank the committee for its consideration of these policies and urge the committee to support Senate Bill thirteen sixty six. Thank you for receiving my testimony.
Thank you so much for being here and providing testimony both in person and written. Is it the, does pharma oppose the like PBM structure? Or is pharma offering suggestions for how it works better? It's like, like are PBMs the way they exist in the United States, right? We're one of the only countries where, you know, this system exists. Is it, we'd rather not have them or is it the structure needs these, you know, reforms?
Right now, we're suggesting that there are certain reforms that could correct a lot of the misaligned incentives in the system that are creating upward pressure on price today. And and we feel strongly that delinking this compensation from the the price of a medicine is one way to help disincentivize some of that upward pressure pharmaceutical manufacturers, as many other entities across the supply chain are, are operating in the system the way it's designed today. And we think that breaking this link would go a long way to help free up some of these dollars in the system.
So PBMs do provide, you know, a value. They just need some tweaks, you're saying?
Yes, we're saying that that, you know, to the extent that they are providing value to their clients, that they should be able to be compensated for that, you know, they're still free to, you know, within their contracts with the insurer that they're contracting with, negotiate compensation. But we are arguing that that should be fee-based and more closely aligned with that value and not tied to the price of medication.
Okay. Thank you very much for that. Any other questions? Great. Thank you for your testimony. Nate, next, we have Bella Wu. Did I say that correctly?
It is Bilawa, Bilawa Aquacoco.
Bilawa, thank you. And tell us how to say your last name.
Aquacoco.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And yes, and good morning and to all members. Good morning to the chair and members of the committee. My name is Bilawa Aquacoco. I am the Associate Director of the National Community Pharmacists Association. Our association represents the interests of community pharmacies, just over eighteen thousand member pharmacies, including forty three right here in the state of Connecticut. Just wanted to have our very fierce support of Section nine within House Bill seventy thirty nine, that which would put together a a study of the of the insurance commissioner, the the Commissioner of Consumer Protection and also the members of the Commission on Pharmacy. The study to to study the compensation of of compensating pharmacists for healthcare services. A study is a very, very important step in expanding healthcare, expanding pharmacy services, expanding provider status and reimbursement for pharmacy services. I do want to echo Nathan Tinker from the Connecticut Pharmacy Association, the pharmacy students from the University of Connecticut, specifically when it comes to pharmacist provider services, showing that we are seeing a much better improved outcomes when patients go to pharmacists. The study is a very important step. A couple of years ago, Maryland passed a similar study, convening a work group that was sponsored by their state's insurance administration that included the insurance carriers, pharmacists and other and legislators and other relevant stakeholders, very similar to Connecticut's makeup. And a couple of years later, their findings did show the savings, did show that it improves healthcare access. It expands the role of pharmacists in healthcare. And also, it minimizes, it allows other providers to focus on other things when you bring the pharmacist expertise when it comes to chronic disease management, medication management and other specific training that they can use in those spaces. So the Maryland bill did end up becoming a study. They ended up also passing a bill that which allowed pharmacists to be reimbursed for services within their scope. So it is important, first step. And I think passage of specifically a Section nine within this bill will do wonders for the Connecticut pharmacy community and also the patients within the state.
Bilawa, thank you so much for your testimony. I'm not sure if you were here the whole time, but we did get some recommendations for improving the study, maybe having it be a working group. So
Awesome.
we appreciate your feedback on that. Any other questions? Great. Thank you, Bilawa. Next, we have Eric George followed by Nathaniel Rickles.
Good morning. Thank you to the chairs, Representative Wood and the members of the Insurance and Real Estate Committee. My name is Connor Rec and I'm here today on behalf of the Insurance Association of Connecticut. The IAC is a state-based trade organization representing Connecticut's property and casualty insurance industry and Connecticut's life insurance and financial security industries. The IAC strongly supports House Bill six nine eight one. This initiative is environmentally positive, embracing of technology and supports modernization of transaction and commerce. In short, this bill would bring Connecticut into the twenty first century. Specifically, this bill would allow insurers to post certain insurance policies and endorsements on such insurers' internet websites. And it would allow property and casualty insurers to provide policy nonrenewal or cancellation notices by the U.S. Postal Service Intelligent Mail Barcode, or IMB. Eposting refers to the posting of policy forms and endorsements that do not contain personally identifiable information to the internet and sending a link of the materials via email to the policyholder in lieu of mailing paper copies to the policyholder. Policyholders wishing to receive such paper copies are free to request the paper documents from their insurer. There are numerous reasons why Connecticut should adopt the eposting framework contained in this bill. These reasons include the rising cost of paper and postage, supply chain issues impacting the paper industry, and the fact that the U.S. Postal Service levels are becoming more difficult to predict and rely upon. Additionally, eposting laws have been enacted in a majority of states and have been active with many customers for the last five to 10 years. These laws became especially useful during the COVID-19 pandemic, when the insurance industry realized that the vast majority of customers are comfortable using digital delivery services. This bill also deals with intelligent mail barcode. IMB is used to sort and track letters, cards, and flats, offering greater versatility by allowing many services to be requested and embedded within one barcode. IMB also expands the mailer's ability to track individual mail pieces, providing, providing greater mailstream visibility. Moreover, IMB can be used to replace first-class mail, insured mail, and certified mail. We respectfully ask this committee to support House Bill 6981, and thank you for considering our comments on this bill.
Good, great. I almost, it's almost comical that we're sitting here talking about going in this direction because like, all my bills, you know, are moving in this direction. Yes, I mean, everything you're saying makes perfect sense. The Department of Insurance, in their insurance department bill, asked for the same language. So it's just funny, here we are in 2025, talking about the reasons why we should be moving away from paper. But I think you'll find a lot of support for that in this room. We want to make sure that you're not, you know, passing the 55-plus stamp fee onto premiums. Like, I mean, this just makes perfect sense. I'll ask the same question that I asked the health carriers. If someone wants paper, can they get paper?
Representative Wood, my name is Eric George, and I'm the President of the Insurance Association of Connecticut. First, I want to thank Connor for doing phenomenal testimony today. I'm very appreciative of his work. 100% yes. So to answer your question, if a customer wants to have paper, absolutely. And I don't believe that they can change their mind as they go, as if they want paper at some point, and then they want to go paperless, they can go back and forth however they choose. It really is, it puts them in the driver's seat. And I know that there's concern with certain populations not being comfortable with paper. But look at when you go to a sporting event nowadays. How many paper tickets are you seeing? And you see everybody in the stadium, from all manners, backgrounds, you know, where, where they grew up. It is, it is a, it is a patchwork. So I would say that it really is a consumer-friendly situation, and it still gives them the ability and the safety, if they wish, the safety net, if they wish to go paper.
Can I ask questions on some of the other bills?
You can ask whatever you want.
Okay. So the streamlining of the surplus lines language, can you comment on where the association stands on that?
We don't have a position on the surplus lines piece. I completely understand the, the point of view of those who are wanting that, that piece in there, but we are not taking a position on the surplus lines piece.
Are you taking a position on the nonprofit industry, or nonprofit associations, you know, concerns with liability and certain other insurance coverages? And can you explain kind of what's going on in that space?
Sure. So the basic answer is, we're not taking an official position on that. I have spoken to Ben, and I've spoken to you, and I've spoken to the Department of Insurance on this. We, we recognize that there is an issue. You do have to, the situation is where it is because insurers have to assess risk and price it appropriately. So if the risk level is higher than other groups, that is going to be reflected in the premium. And also, each carrier is different, and their, how their market is, or how their book is, is created and, and, and made up is dependent upon the company. You can look to other locations in the United States where other types of insurance, we've seen insurers choose not to write any new business. That happens because perhaps their, their risk comfort has been exceeded. I do want to point out that there will always be carriers to provide. You pointed out the surplus line, the non-admitted market, that is always there. And I, and I do think that sometimes people feel that the surplus lines and non-admitted market is somehow inferior. It is not inferior coverage. It, it, it is priced the way it needs to be, but there is always coverage there. But you know, if you do have higher risks in a facility or, or, or a home, that's going to be reflected in the premium, and that is absolutely going to be reflected. Insurance appetite to be in that market or not.
Are there other ways to mitigate the risk? Like, are there other, is it like a stop-loss policy? Is there something else that can, you know, we're talking about a captive? I mean, or just what are you seeing around the nation, you know, that can help this, the space?
I think the captive and the pooling ideas are obviously creative. I, I do want to just caution, they're not panaceas. A captive insurer facility is not a silver bullet that's going to fix everything, nor is pooling. But you know, to the extent that this, this committee wants to investigate that, I encourage you to do that. I always encourage you to, to get as much information as possible. You're blessed in Connecticut of having probably the premier from in the world developer of captive insurers, insurance companies, in Mike McGlaris. I mean, he is a wealth, a resource that is bar none. He can provide so much information as to how captives are formed, what they are good at, what they perhaps, you know, are not perfect for. So I encourage this committee to look at options, but it is, it is somewhat indicative of the risk. It's very indicative of the risk that is being covered. It is, it is a situation, many of these situations are very risky endeavors. There's a lot of risk, you know, sadly, associated with them.
Great, thank you. I don't have any other questions. Anyone else? Thank you both for being here.
Thank you for your time.
Next up, we have Nathaniel Rickles, followed by Bradford Latchett.
Thank you, Representatives Wood, Senator Cabrera, Vice Chairs Barry and M.R., and other ranking members and distinguished individuals. My name is Nate Rickles, and I'm speaking as a pharmacist, in particular a board-certified psychiatric pharmacist and Associate Dean of Admissions and Student Affairs. I live in the town of Glastonbury and work in stores. I'm speaking to express my strong support for Section 9 of the House Bill 7039, which calls for a study on pharmacist reimbursement for pharmacy services. This bill is a critical step towards ensuring patients in Connecticut can continue to access essential healthcare services provided by pharmacists. It is well-known that pharmacists are often on front lines of the healthcare system by providing critical and highly valued services, such as administering vaccinations, medication, chronic disease management, and other clinical services that improve patient outcomes and reduce overall healthcare costs. In the past few years, our state has been thoughtful in authorizing pharmacists to prescribe hormonal and emergency contraceptives, HIV testing, and treatment, and vaccines for patients 12 and up. In addition, Connecticut allows pharmacists to provide clinical services through collaborative practice agreements. One such agreement that I have been extensively involved with allows pharmacists to administer long-acting injectable medications for mental health disorders and thus promoted patient adherence due to not needing to take oral medication every day. Pharmacist administration of these medicines monthly or every three months at their local pharmacies has been shown to improve multiple patient outcomes through, including treatment adherence and convenient access to these injectable medications. Greater treatment adherence to those, to these mental health medications avoids symptom destabilization that can contribute to costly hospitalizations and services armed to self and others, and we know about the consequences too painfully as it relates to the tragedy in Newtown many years ago. Since the UConn School of Pharmacy started training pharmacists to do these injections in 2017, there have been over 2,800 injections across the state provided by pharmacists. It is estimated pharmacists have sacrificed not receiving over $600,000 in services that would have been otherwise paid by the state to have others do these injections and possibly at a larger cost. States like North Carolina, Colorado, Hawaii reimburse pharmacists for these services. Given the retail pressures, as we've heard by PBM, pharmacists are struggling to stay in business, and pharmacy closings are contributing to pharmacy deserts across the state and country. The lack of reimbursement for clinical services is making it even more difficult for pharmacies to justify keeping their doors open. Pharmacists are unable to continue to give away their time and services at no cost. Closed pharmacies make it even more difficult for Connecticut citizens to have frontline access to health professionals and convenient access to needed medications. Connecticut is one of just nine states that does not provide for reimbursement of any clinical services by pharmacists. A recent straw poll of soon-to-graduating UConn School of Pharmacy students indicated that a majority of the respondents reported the lack of reimbursed clinical services significantly affected their decision to remain in Connecticut or return to Connecticut after completing postgraduate opportunities.
Your three minutes are up, if you could please summarize.
Sure, I'm just done. This further contributes to decreased pharmacists and pharmacies in the state. I urge you to support the Section 9 of the House Bill 7039 and ensure that Connecticut fully evaluates the impact of pharmacists' provided services and the need for appropriate reimbursement. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you, Nate. Any questions from the committee? Great, seeing none, we'll move on to Bradford Latchett, followed by Keith Walsh.
Good morning, Chairperson Sweden-Cabrera, ranking members Pavlok Tomada and Wang, members of the committee. My name is Bradford Latchett. I serve as Director of Government and Industry Affairs for Professional Insurance Agents of Connecticut. I'm here to talk about, to testify in support of HB 6981, which would in part remove the due diligence requirement for placing risks in the not admitted marketplace when done through an unaffiliated surplus lines broker. This bill is a necessary step towards ensuring that Connecticut business can efficiently secure specialized insurance coverage without unnecessary regulatory hurdles. By modernizing our approach to surplus lines placement, HB 6981 would help businesses and citizens obtain the coverage they need while preserving strong consumer protection. So the ENS marketplace is a critical safety net for businesses and individuals who cannot find coverage in the admitted marketplace. It's the place for unique, volatile, distressed, or emerging risks that the admitted marketplace will not write. Currently, Connecticut law requires brokers to obtain three declinations from admitted carriers before going into the ENS marketplace to look for coverage, even when it's evident that the admitted lines carriers will not write the risk. This does not enhance consumer protection, it just creates additional regulatory burdens, delays coverage, increased costs for brokers and policyholders alike. Mr. Berliner spoke about some of the burdens. I know there's several producers that will be speaking to those more directly, so I'll talk a little bit about the consumer protections. While this bill removes unnecessary administrative requirements, it does not reduce consumer protections. First of all, consumers cannot directly access the ENS market. They can't wake up at 8:30 at night thinking, oh, no, my policy isn't expired tomorrow. Go online and buy an ENS policy. They can't go direct. They have to go through an independent producer who then goes to a surplus lines producer. So you have two insurance professionals who are guiding this path to go into the ENS marketplace. You're not going to walk in there by accident. In addition, the vast majority of risks in the commercial, or in the ENS marketplace are commercial lines, roughly about 70 to 30 mix. So you're dealing with a little bit more of a sophisticated buyer right off the bat. In addition, I mentioned that those, you can't go in, but this bill would only allow bypassing declinations if you went with an unaffiliated surplus lines broker. That's not unintentional language. That would mean that the retail producer is not affiliated with that surplus lines producer at all. They're not, you know, railroading business to them in some sort of scheme. It's an independent person here, an independent person here. So you're getting that kind of broad approach. In addition, there's also an economic incentive beside, behind producers wanting to go in the admitted marketplace, excuse me, largely commissions-based. If they go into ENS, they have to split their commissions with an ENS broker. No person really wants to split their commissions if they don't have to. In addition, these producers have contracts with their admitted lines carriers, they have relationships. They don't necessarily have those contracts or relationships with an ENS carrier, so there's a arms-length remove there. So they're going to pick the carrier that they're more familiar with, that they're going to get compensated with, as opposed to going over into the ENS marketplace. They're really only going to go there when the, the coverage is exactly what the, the client needs, and it's not available through their admitted carriers. I should also mention that there are several other states that have already taken this approach. Louisiana, Mississippi, Virginia, Wisconsin, North Dakota, excuse me, have all eliminated their declination process totally, and they have not experienced any sort of, you know, upturning of their marketplace.
Your three minutes are up, if you could please summarize. Thank you.
One thing I want to mention is just a technical correction to the bill. Right now, the bill is drafted, it says, "Any policy of insurance where the surplus lines broker seeks to procure or place such insurance through an unaffiliated wholesale surplus lines producer." That first mention of surplus lines, we would suggest taking that out, the, to reflect the current practice. When business goes into ENS, it goes from a retail producer or a retail broker to a surplus lines broker. Rarely goes from a surplus lines broker to another surplus lines broker. So this would, as currently written, would only help a small percentage. Taking that language out would help, would reflect the, the industry practice. With that, I conclude my testimony.
Great. No, thank you for that. I'm glad you were able to get that in on the record, so we can make that change. I, I have asked my, my questions on this. I think you did a great job hitting on the consumer protections piece, which is what we're interested in. I don't have any other questions, anyone from the committee, Representative Pavlok Tomada?
I just, I would just like to know the line. Is there a line you can refer to, just so we can follow?
There is. You know what, I should have printed off the bill. I, I don't know the line, but I can certainly send it to you. It's towards, I absolutely will give it to you.
Thank you.
Great, I don't see any other questions. Thank you for being here.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Next up, we have Keith Walsh, followed by Sam Helmyer.
Thank you to the chairs, ranking members, and the rest of the committee for the opportunity to testify today in support of Sections 10 through 13 of HB 6981. My name is Keith Walsh, and I'm the General Counsel of the Federal Home Loan Bank of Boston. The Home Loan Bank of Boston is one of 11 regional home loan banks chartered by Congress in 1932 with a dual mission of supporting liquidity to our members and affordable housing and community development in the regions where we do business. Banks, credit unions, insurance companies, and community development financial institutions located in New England are eligible to become members of the Home Loan Bank of Boston, and we currently have 13 insurance company members in Connecticut. To access home loan bank funding, members must pledge collateral primarily consisting of residential loans and mortgage-backed securities. Sections 10 through 13 of HB 6981 are designed to resolve disparities between federal banking law and Connecticut insurance law, and thereby create parity in terms of the access to home loan bank liquidity that Connecticut banks, credit unions, and insurance companies have. Currently, the Home Loan Bank benefits from protections under federal banking law that do not exist under the Connecticut Insurance Code, and therefore, we'll be able to provide lending terms better to Connecticut banks and credit unions than we're able to provide to Connecticut insurance companies. By adding comparable protections in the Connecticut Insurance Code, we'd be able to equalize the playing field and provide the same lending terms to Connecticut banks, credit unions, and insurance companies when it comes to providing liquidity to those members. Existing Connecticut law establishes the priority of the home loan bank's security interests. It also already provides that a secured creditor is entitled to the value of its collateral in the event an insurance company member were to fail. So instead of changing the home loan bank's access to collateral, it simply introduces certainty as to the timing of that access, replacing a automatic state period of an indeterminable length with a state period of 10 business days. Sections 10 through 13 include recommendations from the National Association of Insurance Commissioners. They also, those sections also mirror a model act adopted by the National Council of Insurance Legislators. Moreover, similar legislation has now been adopted by 30 states, including neighboring states of Massachusetts and Rhode Island. And without this legislation, Connecticut insurance companies will continue to be at a disadvantage in terms of their access to liquidity from a home loan bank than insurance companies in those 30 states. Although not the focus of my testimony, I'd also like to note that the Home Loan Bank supports Section 14 of the bill as well, but others will be here today to testify in support of that section. Closing, I thank you and the committee for your consideration, and welcome any questions you may have.
Thank you very much for your testimony. I think you hit all the pieces that we would have questions on. I will also note that we've received all supportive testimony on this. I've also received several emails and phone calls on it. It's great to hear that there's, you know, 30 other states. It's, we don't want to fall behind, really. So I thank you for your testimony. Any other questions? Representative Pavlok Tomada? Representative Pavlok Tomada.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I want to thank you for all the time that you spent with me going over this bill and many aspects of it. And in our discussions, you did mention that this is already within federal law. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
So it's already within federal law, and when a Connecticut bank or credit union, really any bank or credit union with jurisdiction in any state enters a receivership, it's a federal proceeding, not a state proceeding.
Okay. And so then what aspect of this, if it is a federal proceeding, if you can, for the record, explain what the role of the state law is in this?
When an insurance company fails, it's a state matter, it's a state-by-state matter. So depending on where an insurance company is domiciled, its failure would be handled under the laws of that given state. So for a Connecticut domiciled insurance company, it's a specific state proceeding that would occur if that insurance company enters receivership. And therefore, the, the need to introduce these protections for the home loan bank has been a 50-state issue, it's, and that's why it's, it's, you know, gone from seven, maybe if we were having this discussion 10 years ago to 30 today. And I, I expect the trend has been, you know, a few states, more states pass this every year, so the trend is certainly moving in the direction closer to 50.
And then there is, it does give a, a definitive time of up to or not more than 10 business days for the stay to be in place. Is there an option then, should the receiver, I guess it would be, is it the receiver or the Department of Insurance, who would, if that could be extended, is that an option?
That's certainly something. The designated receiver is the Connecticut Insurance Department, and, and what those sections also provide is during that 10-business-day period, the home loan bank would be required to cooperate and work with the receiver on an organized, on an organized plan of liquidation. And during those discussions, we would certainly be open to a greater period than 10 days if it was warranted. And the goal was to rehabilitate the company, not to liquidate the company, which is often the case when an insurance company enters receivership.
So is the receiver then the ultimate decision-maker as far as if that, if that stay is extended?
The law would provide for a 10-business-day stay period. Beyond that 10-business days, it would be among, it would be as a result of the mutual agreement of the home loan bank and the Connecticut Insurance Department.
Under this law?
Under, or under this bill? Our right would, 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 to liquidate would occur after 10-business days, and any extension of that would have to be with the mutual agreement of the home loan bank and, and the CID. But I, but again, this law mandates that those discussions are happening during those 10 days.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
I don't see any other questions from the committee. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you very much.
Next up, we have Sam Hallmeyer followed by Anthony Losasso.
Good morning Chairwood, Chair Cabrera, and members of the committee. My name is Sam Hallmeyer with the Pharmaceutical Care Management Association. I'm Senior Director of State Affairs and PCMA is the National Trade Association for America's Pharmacy Benefit Managers. PBMs administer prescription drug plans and operate mail order and specialty pharmacies for those in Connecticut, as well as the rest of the United States, through, through coverage of prescription drug benefits. I'm here today to oppose Senate Bill 1366. I did submit written testimony, so I will keep my comments today fairly brief. Before I dive into our concerns with the bill, I want to remind this committee that no one is required to use a PBM. There's no state or federal law that requires plan sponsors to contract with a PBM. However, due to the purchasing powers of PBMs, they can negotiate with drug manufacturers and pharmacies to create extensive networks and drive down costs. So PBMs exist to drive down costs. And additionally, PBMs have no say in the price of a drug that Pharma sets, that alone is set by Pharma. So we have three main concerns with the bill. The first one is how PBMs are compensated, and then PBMs are acting as fiduciaries, and finally, the ban on spread pricing. So the language in how PBMs are compensated is on line 29 of the bill, or Section 1, Subparagraph 4. So this language would prohibit plan sponsors from choosing performance-based arrangements and paying their PBM on how well they perform by reducing the cost of drugs that Pharma sets through rebates. It would change the business model for how PBMs interact with drug manufacturers and negotiating those discounts, what we think is resulting in Pharma offering less of a rebate, and PBMs would be paid on a flat fee arrangement. So due to Pharma, we think to, this bill would, in Pharma offering less of a rebate, we anticipate plan sponsors to bear the cost of that in the fully insured market in Connecticut. PCMA predicts to see an increase of $301 million in premium increases in 2026. Connecticut patients would be paying those premiums. The state of New Mexico also considered changing how PBMs are compensated similar to this bill, and generated a fiscal note in committee, and for the state employee plan in 2026, it would result in an increased cost of premiums of $60 million. And due to this fiscal note, the bill did die in committee. To be clear, this language does nothing on the price that's set by, the drug prices that are set by Pharma. It only impacts how plan sponsors pay for PBM services. The Pharma rep prior to me testifying, you know, stated that PBMs prefer higher list prices, yet here I am now asking Pharma to lower their prices. Next, I want to discuss PBMs as fiduciary, which is on line 64 or Section 2 of the bill. This would require PBMs to act in fiduciary role to the health carrier, pharmacy and patient. PCMA, along with the Department of Labor and federal courts, state that PBMs are not fiduciary because PBMs do not control any plan assets. All those contractual terms that are in a PBM contract are decided by the plan sponsor, and then the PBM just serves an administrative role, whatever the plan sponsor decides when it comes to their contract. So from our perspective, in no way are PBMs controlling any plan assets. And fiduciary mandates would subject PBMs to broader legal liabilities resulting in added cost to plans, which we estimate in the fully insured market in Connecticut to be $60 million in 2026. Finally, I want to discuss the, the ban on spread pricing, which starts on line 24 of the bill, or Section 1, Subparagraph 3. Spread pricing is a type of risk mitigation contract for plan sponsors to choose. It offers more predictability for those plans, and it locks plan sponsors into drug prices as patients pick up their drugs from those pharmacies. Currently, about a third of plans still choose to use a spread pricing arrangement. PCMA believes that plan sponsors should decide on their contract that best fits the needs of their plan and beneficiaries, and we think that removing spread pricing takes away that ability for plans to design their benefits. So in conclusion, I want to thank the committee for allowing me to testify today in opposition to Senate Bill 1366. We believe that this bill does nothing to lower the cost of a drug set by drug manufacturers. In fact, we're concerned it might do the opposite and raise costs and premiums for everyone in Connecticut. Additionally, it is not plan sponsors who are asking for these policy proposals in the bill, it is special interests who we think benefit to gain from these changes in policies. Again, thank you for the time to testify, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Sam. You answered a lot of questions. I thought the testimony was, was really good. I want to understand the fiduciary language. Where is this coming from? Because it doesn't make sense to me either, but it's popping up in working groups and in pieces of legislation. I don't, I don't understand how this is, you know, coming up here. Do you have any background?
Chairwood, appreciate the question. We're not sure how a PBM could have a fiduciary responsibility over pharmacy. We do contract with pharmacies, but I, I can't fathom how we would control any of their assets in any way, shape or form. As far as, you know, a fiduciary duty to a plan sponsor and patient, that also can't be done at the same time because the plan sponsor, one, we don't, PBMs don't contract with patients, so I'm not sure how that can be done. And then when the plan sponsor space, let's use the state employee plan as an example. The state employee plan of Connecticut talks to their PBM and tells them, "We want our copays to look like this. We want our formularies to look like this in our pharmacy networks," and the PBM just administers that. So I'm, it's unclear to me how or where this is coming from and how PBMs would have a fiduciary role.
And just going back to the rebate discussion, what percentage does the PBM keep? What percentage is passed on to the members?
Yeah, thanks for the question. So the Connecticut Insurance Department did a report, I think it was released back in early 2024, the one for this year hasn't been released yet. But in the aggregate, PBMs retained 0.3% of rebates and passed back to Plans of Connecticut 99.7% of rebates.
Okay. Thank you for that. The state of Connecticut Employee Plan uses a PBM, correct?
Yes.
Do, I'll just pick a company. Does Eversource use a PBM?
I believe so, I would imagine.
Does Hartford Hospital use a PBM?
I would imagine so.
So where's this, I mean, what's, why are PBMs, you know, kind of getting this bad rep? And where, where's this coming from?
That's a great question, and I want to be respectful, and that, we just think that, you know, PBMs exist to drive down the costs. We do contract with these various employers, unions and government programs. I think the reason PBMs are being blamed for all of this is just the finger pointing that goes on within the healthcare industry. Sure, PBMs do play a role, but we exist to drive down those costs, and we just believe it's the finger pointing is the result of PBMs getting all this heat.
Yeah, it's, it's hard to kind of get a straight understanding of how our system works, but I appreciate your feedback. Representative Pavlok Tomada.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Okay, so, and I just want to kind of clarify for my own, for my own good. So the PBMs that you represent, you're saying they have never asked manufacturers to increase the list price? Is that?
Not, sorry, not that I'm aware of.
But it, it is, so the percentage though, that they, that they make, that a PBM makes, it's a percentage of what? Overall, and I know we had talked previously, and I think you were going to get me a contract of some kind, is it a percentage of total sales or the percentage of, what's that percentage exactly?
Sorry, Representative, I'm following, what percentage are you referring to?
Like the, well, you're making, the PBMs get their money on the, a percentage of, that's my question, a percentage of, like, overall sales or a percentage of a, of what, I don't know, the difference of what the original list price is or something? I don't, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, maybe the percentage, so PBMs negotiate rebates.
Yeah.
And then those accrue over time, and then we pass those back to the plan, and the percentage I referred to a moment ago on the Connecticut Insurance Department's number that PBMs pass back over 99% of those rebates? Is that the percentage you're referring to?
No, I thought you, the way you make your money is a percentage of, I'd assume overall, overall sales of that drug or I, that's.
Okay, I see now. So it all depends on the, the contract arrangement that we have with the plan, so plans can certainly choose to use a flat fee arrangement that this bill is suggesting. There's an opportunity for plans to work with their PBM to do that, but they find that other ways of compensation, that the more rebates that PBMs negotiate, that then they then pass back to the plan, the PBM will get paid more as they negotiate more. So I don't know the exact rebate, or the exact percentage arrangement, and I have that on my list to get you a, an example of what that might look like. So we're concerned that over time, this will result in PBMs being able to negotiate more rebates than ultimately we would be able to pass back less rebates. But I, I think I understand your question now, I'll have to go back and take a look at it.
Yeah, so.
And follow up.
Because then I don't understand how, it wouldn't benefit you to have an increased list price if, if, if it is based on a percentage of, I don't know, overall, overall sales. But again, that's, that's what I'm confused about, what exactly those, at least an example of those arrangements are.
So there are instances where there is a list price that does have a rebate that would result in a lower net cost to the plan. So if there's a drug that has, say, $100 list price but a $50 rebate, and then there's a, the same exact drug would have a list price of, say, $75 with no rebate, PBMs will work with plan sponsors and decide that the one with the rebate is an ultimately lower cost, lower net cost to the plan because of that rebate that they would receive back.
Okay.
So that would be an instance where the PBM would prefer the higher list price, only because it's a lower net cost to the plan that's paying for those benefits.
Yeah, I get that.
Okay.
And I'm not asking for a current contract of.
Sure.
Obviously, right? But I, it's hard for me to even analyze or have a discussion without ever seeing one, and I know I've given other industries the same, the same question and same ask. I, I need to see one.
Sure.
In order to then even have really a conversation, because otherwise, I don't know what I'm talking about. And we've been going on, going in circles, like I said before, for years, chasing our tails, and it's just getting tiring, so. Information, of course, that can be obtained, and I get there's private contracts, but at the same time, you can always, there are things you can redact, but.
Sure.
I, I think we're at the point now where it's, we have to do something, and we can't just sit having the, everybody point fingers back and forth and go on like this, it's just, it's very tiring, so, you know, hopefully that will encourage more conversations, but yeah, I, I need to see something, so please, thank you.
Thank you.
Representative Nuccio.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So listening to what you're saying, I'm going to try to kind of like brew this down and make sure I've got it right. With the PBMs, you're giving back 97, 99.7% of the rebates to the plan sponsor. You cut a check to them, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Like, get the rebates and quarterly you cut a check back to them. And theoretically, that money is then used to offset the cost of healthcare or the premium, correct?
Correct, yeah, lower premiums for everybody.
Right, so they're taking the, the rebates from pharmacy, spreading it back over the wider premium for the entire populace. PBMs, as far as I understand, you do not charge an admin fee, correct?
That all depends on the contractual arrangements with our plans. So there are admin, I guess there would be an admin fee with the pharmacy.
Right. Well, I'm talking with the plans, though. I'm talking about, you know, because like you said in the beginning, right, insurance, nobody, you don't have to have insurance. The days of Obamacare, you know, if you don't want insurance and you want to pay by cash, you can, nobody's, you know, like, the, the PBM model again is it's an insurance, it's something that you're purchasing, or your employer is actually purchasing, and then it's an employee benefit to you if you chose to take it or not. So what I'm trying to get at is, my understanding, which is not nearly as thorough as straight insurance, I'm trying to like kind of marry these here, is that for the most part, if you think about the MLR, right, it's 80 to 85 cents paid on claims, 15 cents is administration with a built-in 2% to 3% profit, but that profit is built in through an administrative fee, right? So you've got your administrative costs, your network costs, your customer service, everything else, and then there's like an administrative fee that accounts for the 2% to 3% of profit. In the PBM world, your profit mainly comes from the spread, which is the difference in what you're getting it for and what it's being sold for at the pharmacy, correct? Because there is no quote-unquote administrative fee on addition to the administrative.
Okay, I follow, sure.
Got it?
Yeah.
Am I accurate in that?
I believe so, but I, I'd like to go back and double check, but that does sound accurate, yes.
Okay, so if this legislation were to pass and they were to get rid of spread, right, it's just going to put us into an MLR situation where you're going to have admin and network costs, et cetera, et cetera, and then you're just going to charge a flat admin fee for a 2% to 3% profit on top of, this is just, it's just a different word for the MLR portion of it, correct?
I haven't considered it in that way. I'd have to think about it a little bit more, but what you're saying does make sense.
You're not going to get rid of spreading, you guys are just not going to make a profit, right?
Right, right.
If your profit is made through spread and this legislation gets rid of.
It would be a flat fee, yeah.
You're going to get a flat fee.
No longer performance-based, it would be a flat fee arrangement, yes.
Right, okay. I just wanted to make sure I was thinking of that correctly.
Sure.
Because, you know, I think what, the first year that I was here, I sat in Kerry's office and, and for hours tried to explain, you know, when we were talking about it, how, you know, it all starts at the beginning of the price, the fee that Pharma is setting, and then from there, it trickles down. It's just like the same thing with healthcare costs, it starts with the fee negotiated by the hospitals and the physicians, and it trickles down, you add on admin, you get to the number, if you want insurance costs to be lower, you have to cut the base cost. So in this case, it's the same sort of thing, except.
I follow your logic, yeah.
Spread is just a, it's just a different way of basically saying it's the admin fee. And I'm not saying that there doesn't need to be more transparency.
Sure.
In what that fee is, but eliminating the spread just means you're going to go to a different model of admin plus profit, correct?
I would speculate that you're right.
All right, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Great, thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Anthony Losasso followed by Laura Hodge.
Dear co-chairs and members of the committee, I appreciate the opportunity to be part of this conversation with you today. My name is Tony Losasso. I am a healthcare economist and professor and chair of the Economics Department at DePaul University in Chicago. I'm speaking here related to the PBM-focused portion of the bill's under consideration. And I'd like to say that PBMs, in my view, are a, an important part, important and I think widely misunderstood and often malign part of the pharmaceutical supply chain. As we've just heard, PBMs at their core function in a critical role of forcing pharmaceutical companies to compete on price. And competing on price is, generally speaking, the last thing that pharmaceutical companies want to do. This notion of delinking PBMs from having an incentive to negotiate for lower prices is one of the fundamental issues that we're talking about here today, and we were, you were just speaking. we're talking about here today, and we were, you were just speaking about momentarily, moments ago. Removing the incentives to negotiate is effectively writing a blank check to the pharmaceutical industry and strengthening pharma's bargaining power. And that's a bad thing from the consumer standpoint and the payer's standpoint. We often hear a lot about who the consumers are, but we shouldn't lose sight of the fact that the payers and who they are, they're small businesses, large businesses, they are all struggling to offer health insurance benefits that provide value to employees. They are diffuse, and they have very little voice in this debate. Price competition is a good thing for consumers and payers. And I say all this as a, as a, as an avowed fan of the pharmaceutical industry and their health improving innovations. But that doesn't mean that they should get a permanent hall pass from competition, which is precisely what I believe. They are funding this enormous effort, I believe, to distract from their own pricing power and point the finger at PBMs. Pharma has rich profit margins, they have the legal monopoly that patent protection provides, and contrary to what we often hear, they're, generally speaking, firmly in the driver's seat when it comes to pricing power. So I urgently urge you to carefully consider the broader implications and potential unintended consequences of any legislation that would weaken the role of PBMs. I do believe the stakes are high for the healthcare system and also for all Americans who do depend on affordable access to medications. I look forward to continuing this conversation with you and any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much for joining us. Any questions from the committee? Seeing none, Anthony, thank you. Next up, we have Laura Hach, followed by Bruce Stovall.
Senator Wood, Senator Cabrera, ranking member, Pavlov Tomato, and members of the Insurance Committee, I thank you today for the opportunity to testify in support of SB 1366. My name is Laura Hoak. I am the Associate Vice President of Advocacy and Policy at the National Multiple Sclerosis Society. I have submitted much more detailed testimony online, and I hope that you're able to read it, along with some testimony from an individual living with MS in the state of Connecticut. But I did want to take this time to address some of the other points that have been made during previous comments. And so, this MS society agrees that drug pricing is too high. We are not putting the blame of drug pricing solely on PBMs. We understand there are several players in the supply chain, and that the pharmaceutical industry certainly plays a role in the list price. We are, as of July of 2024, the average are the median price for the MS disease-modifying therapies that patients rely on for care was over $107,000. Certainly not a price that anyone is paying out of pocket. What we don't agree with is the fact that there is nothing to be done and that there is no part that PBMs play in the structure of formularies and other decisions in what patients access and their medications. So I would like to take this time to talk a little bit about two interim reports that the Federal Trade Commission released in July of 2024 and in January of 2025. And these reports found that PBMs are seemingly able to profit off of the system by inflating drug costs due to their unique role in the supply chain and their ability to build formularies for insurers. They certainly do help build those formularies. One of the main roles is formulary design, and these are often not driven by medical practice but by rebates in the system. MS, like many other medications that we make, many other diseases, MS medications are not interchangeable. So just because one is a different price does not mean it's the best option for a patient. Likewise, PBM may prefer a higher-cost brand drug because it will increase their revenue, resulting in a higher-cost product receiving favorable formulary placement, because they do make money off of the wholesale acquisition cost, a percentage of that, to answer, I think, a question that Representative Pavlov Tomato had earlier. And additionally, in the federal, the January 2025 report, the FTC found that the three largest PBMs marked up many specialty generics and biosimilars at the pharmacies affiliated with them through the vertical integration you heard about earlier. These markups were often hundreds or even thousands of percent. An example is Delphim and Predean, I apologize, I'm sure the pharmacist in the room could have pronounced that better. For instance, it's a generic equivalent of a DMT branded, and it was marked up on the commercial marketplace by 2,435%, unaffordable for anyone living, well, even middle-class Americans. And so we are asking you to, encouraging you to pass SB 1366 to address especially delinking pricing from, contracts from the price of the drugs and turning it into a flat fee.
Great, thank you, Laura. Can you just explain a little bit about the formulary, you know, discussion? You said the insurance company and PBMs are working together on that. Can you just give us a little background?
Yeah, so, as my understanding and I believe is covered in, in those FTC reports as well, I'm happy to send you those if you're interested in reading them. They're quite illuminating. They've, they've covered a lot of the points we've been making for years on this. They are recommending placement on formularies based on negotiations that they're making. And so if they've negotiated a drug that is going to pay out more favorably, they may put it on a lower tier, even if it's not medically recommended or is not financially feasible for most people. For instance, we have, I, one of the, the testimony submitted by one of our volunteers who lives in MS, in Connecticut, MS, she was, her doctor recommended as she was progressing, a medication, specific medication for her and her insurance company working with the PBMs had placed it on a higher tier, and they then said it tried to force her onto a medication that costs $20,000 a year more than the medication that her provider had recommended and was medically suggested for her.
All right, I appreciate that. We're getting so many, so much information on this, and we definitely want to work towards a solution, so.
We appreciate that, and we certainly do not believe that, as I said, PBMs are the only issue. We are happy to work this committee on any issues to solve the healthcare cost crisis.
Appreciate your testimony. Any other questions? Great, thank you, Laura. Next up, we have Bruce Stovall, followed by Marcy Russo. Dr. Marcy Russo.
Good afternoon, I guess, members of the committee. My name is Bruce Stovall. I represent Oak Hill. Oak Hill was established in 1893. We're 501(c)(3), and we're the largest provider of disability services in Connecticut. We operate 65 group homes and accredited special education school, several camps, an assistive technology center, as well as a number of specialized clinical programs. We employ approximately 1,600 individuals and operate in 50-plus towns across the state. Nonprofits provide the state's health and human services, and we are experiencing an insurance crisis. We need to be able to hold liability insurance, insurance on our vehicles and buildings and other policies. And when these costs increase at the rates they have been, or when carriers threaten to drop our agency based on the services we provide, it endangers our ability to provide essential services for the state. Put simply, if we cannot insure our programs, we cannot provide our services. One prominent example of how our insurance costs at Oak Hill have skyrocketed can be illustrated with the changes we've been compelled to make in our umbrella insurance policy. Two years ago, Oak Hill carried a $25 million policy that cost us about $125,000 a year. Last year, we had to drop down to $15 million coverage level while paying over $500,000 annually. We are a nonprofit with the majority of our income coming through state POS contracts. That difference must be made up somewhere, and that somewhere manifests itself through fewer programs and less people served. These are the experiences in my agency, but organizations across the state and other nonprofits are experiencing the same thing. I appreciate the committee's focus on the issue and urge you to support our industry pooling their risk together and being able to purchase the necessary insurances from a carrier dedicated to insuring these programs in the state and limiting the liability of nonprofits in an effort to make the necessary insurance they need to operate more affordable. Please support SB 1322. Thank you.
Thank you. We hear you, we hear your concerns, and this bill is meant to try to find a solution to keep you guys in business and not having to pay these larger increases. Representative Pavlov Tomato.
Can you give me those numbers again? You said you had a $250 million policy at one-
25 million, which we paid $125,000 for.
Yep.
That was several years ago.
And then you went to what?
We dropped down to 15 million-
15.
-based on price points, and we're paying over $500,000 annually.
Okay.
So we got, we paying much more for much less.
And was that attributable to any certain thing, whether it was auto or-
This is industry-wide.
Okay.
Again, we serve a complex 24/7 population. School in particular has young teenagers with many, many issues. Again, why the costs are going through the roof, I think, you know, would be the insurance carrier question, but this is what we're experiencing.
Yeah, I know, I just had a conversation with my Board of Education, and they only budgeted a 10% increase, and the increase was a lot larger.
Yeah, oh, I didn't mention our vehicles. Oak Hill has typically 190 vehicles on the road any given day. Our per-unit cost has also gone through the roof on that. So another thing to keep an eye on.
Yeah, and I know we had in the past increased the required, right, amounts of coverage, I think, and I think that had something to do with it as well. So I know there was a representative that put in a bill to put those amounts back down, decrease those, but I'm not sure if that's-
We're hoping the study can kind of cover all the bases, that one included, too.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay.
I don't see any other questions, Bruce. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Next up, we have Dr. Marcy Russo, followed by Kathleen Bailey.
Good morning, everybody. Good morning, members of the Insurance and Real Estate Committee, and good morning, Representative Wood. It's nice to see you again. Yep, my name is Marcy Russo. I'm a practicing psychologist in Connecticut, and many of you might be aware, I'm also the Legislative Chair for the Connecticut Psychological Association. We are an advocacy organization that represents the profession and practice of psychology in Connecticut. I'm here before you today to very much strongly support House Bill 7039, an Act Concerning Health Insurance. And I would like to specifically speak to Section 1, if that's okay with the committee. And Section 1 limits insurance company clawbacks to a two-year period and requires written notice and verification, or explanation, rather, of what the clawback is about within one year of data service. I actually would strongly suggest that the committee and strongly recommend that the bill really limits clawback to a one-year period. Many of you might be aware what a clawback is. It's a demand by insurance company to take back revenue from a provider that the insurance company has already paid that provider to provide a service. The service has already been delivered, and the patient has already received that service. And at times, the patient sometimes is already discharged from, from practice, from, from service. Clawbacks in Connecticut, as you heard, for behavioral health providers are a real major problem. Just a little brief survey that we did of over 100 psychologists, just that are members of the Connecticut Psychological Association, almost 70% of the psychologists that we surveyed had a demand for a clawback, had to experience a clawback, and had a clawback that was for a service that had happened over a year ago. And in some, and in many instances, the standard is clawbacks up to five years after a patient has received a service. You know, given the effectiveness of many psychological treatments in our world today and in our state today, many treatments are brief, and they lead to patients being discharged from care earlier than previously held. Therefore, clawbacks that extend really beyond a one-year period can often occur in cases where patients are already discharged from our clinical care. And therefore, the patient, the payment from a patient to help support the cost of that clawback is not capable of being recouped from that payment. And it's really the psychologist that ends up losing the cost or paying the cost and losing that money from their business. I just kindly asked the committee, where else in the business atmosphere of Connecticut does this scenario happen, where a business delivers a service or a product to a customer, only to have that customer happily leave with their product or service, and then that business has to pay back the cost of that same product or service that has already been delivered? So you can, it's really disruptive to the delivery of care and behavioral health systems. It's, it's unfair to psychologists, as well as other behavioral health providers and agencies in Connecticut that are trying to maintain a business or a private practice. They are inevitably, clawbacks are inevitably one of the driving forces that many behavioral health providers actually leave insurance panels and leave as audit, as in-network providers, and I'm sure that you're also aware of that. So I do greatly appreciate the opportunity to express my opinion. I appreciate the opportunity for us to represent our strong support of this bill, and I am certainly open to any questions the committee might have.
Thank you, Dr. Russo. Can you just walk us through how a clawback works? If, you know, two, two years later, you are experiencing a claw, a clawback, do you get a notice? Does it come directly out of your account? Just walk us through how that works.
Sure, Representative Wood. It varies a bit. Through my experience and through the experience of our members, it varies a bit in terms of what insurance company it is. We see the tendency of some private insurance companies to engage in more clawback activity than our, than our Medicaid system here in Connecticut. But one of the worst and probably most disruptive examples is, is that, yep, the provider gets a letter in the mail, and it could have a number of services that the insurance company is requiring a payback for. And at times, unfortunately, the reason why the payback is happening isn't clearly documented on the insurance. There comes general reasons, like the service was denied or there was an error in processing. And I have to tell you, many of our members, including myself, when I've actually tried to call the insurance companies to get a sense of what exactly happened, it's nearly impossible. The amount of time that you spend on the phone, the ambiguous process that you go through for appeal, or you appeal and then you never hear anything, or you simply, quite frankly, give up because the time it takes you to be able to understand why a clawback is happening is, is, it's not supported. So that's unfortunately how it's, how it's happening. The provider is often in the dark about why the clawback is happening, although the provider, and the provider is also taking a huge loss in service, because obviously, if it's not paid back within a certain time, then there could be other ramifications for that provider.
Thank you for that explanation. So basically, what I just heard is that you may get a letter in the mail with a non-explanation that a clawback is happening, you're unable to get some clarification on it, and is there anything in the letter that says, here's how you work on an appeal?
There's usually a standard sentence that says, if you want to appeal it, you can call this number. And that's kind of sometimes, quite often, where you then enter in a black hole of press number one and speak to this and put on hold, or, or you're spent on waiting on the phone for a customer service person. Sometimes our members have described for several hours.
All right.
And, and some of our members have gotten, there are instances of clawbacks resolved. Our organization has tried to work personally with relevant parties in the state and, and some individual members, if they have the tenacity, to really be quite persistent and dedicate a lot of time to it, have been able to get some things resolved, or have been able to understand why they're, they're doing a clawback. But I, I have to report, and unfortunately, that's not the majority of, of what's happening. The majority is we're really left without any answers and what we believe is an adequate explanation for why we would be paying back a service that we had already delivered to a patient.
Great. I appreciate you walking us through that. It sounds like we may have some additional work to do on this language so that the process is a little easier, rather than just focus on a timeframe. So, thank you for that testimony. Any other questions? Representative Nuccio.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I want to kind of dig into that, because I had spoken to somebody else that was here, and I've had people, I've had friends who are psychologists and other people in my district reach out to me, and I wanted to clarify, I know, I think Medicaid has a five-year clawback, but I didn't think straight commercial insurance was that long. So our, when you guys are getting the clawback letters, because Medicaid is not, it doesn't come on Medicaid letterhead, it's administered by insurance companies. So is there differentiation between Medicaid and commercial payers for this?
We do see that from our members. We do not hear as many of our members as psychologists in the Connecticut Psychological Association having difficulty with clawbacks with Medicaid. And actually, quite frankly, in my private practice, I am a Medicaid provider as well, too. And I, and I- And I, and I am quite pleased with both how reimbursement happens with Medicaid and how, when there is a problem or a denial, how available Caroline Behavioral Health Services is to discuss the problem with, with the claim. Most of our members are reporting that this comes from private and commercial insurances. And I, right, I did a fairly good Google search myself and I've done some, quite, some research in trying to find what actually is a law in terms of the clawback time or not. And what I can speak to is it's really just sort of the standard that we see with the private insurance companies and the reports of our members in terms of how clawbacks have gone back two, three, and in some instances, five years.
Okay, so that's, that's interesting. And I think we should definitely look at that language because I'm, I'm hearing, well, we had somebody testify that it's 18 months in Connecticut already in statute. So we're going to have to try to dig that up and see. Some of the other issues that I've seen, though, have been providers submitting paper claims and, or duplicate payments. Like if they submit more than once and they get paid for duplicate payments, then the insurance company comes back and takes that. And, you know, I have a hard time disagreeing with that. If, if somebody gets paid twice for the same service, you know, even if it's 18 months or two years later, then that money should be paid back because it's not a legitimate claim. So I, can you give us some examples of what you're seeing the clawbacks on? Because everyone that I've been involved with so far, we've gotten resolved pretty quickly. And for the most part, it has been issues like double, double claims or double payment or the person didn't have coverage at the time that the, the service took place. It was all kind of legitimate stuff. So I'm trying to get an idea of what exactly it is that you're seeing that you think we should be looking at to fix.
Absolutely. And regardless of whatever timeframe, timeframe is put in, legitimate clawbacks should be, should be done. And legitimate duplication of error or something that wasn't billed or the process wasn't filed properly, it should legitimately be paid back. It's just that when you get a letter without any type of explanation, that would give you an indication of what happened and then you're trying to figure out what happened without an adequate explanation or contact or ability to work with anybody to do so, that's where it becomes pretty frustrating. And I think that's where it steps outside of reasonability. I do think that we, there is a lot of ambiguity in terms of, and sometimes that unfortunately happens. This, this in the law is documented here, this somewhere in a manual is documented here, that, and they might be all contradictory. I do think that that is the beauty of this type of bill and that's why I was so happy to see it. That if we can establish one standard, then that brings some clarity in terms of not only the, the distance in which we're allowing a clawback to happen in terms of time, but also when providers get some notification, having a clear explanation of why that clawback is happening. Document it in the letter, that it was coded incorrectly or that it was a duplicate, you know, a double bill.
Yeah, I can agree with that. And as you said, I know there's a, a lot of documentation that happens on the side of psychologists and treatment plans and such that is a little excessive in comparison to medical documentation and that. But I, I definitely think there's work to be done here. I just want to be cognizant of the fact that if something is already out there, if there's somebody abusing it, then we know about that. We can bring it to the Department of Insurance and to really kind of look at how we can take away some of that unpaid document time. And if it means clarifying why it's being clawed back specifically. And, and I think, you know, the insurance company should have a certain amount of time to be able to get back to you guys to figure that out. So it doesn't just linger, so it's not just a frustration thing, so.
Thank you.
Senator Cabrera.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Doctor, for testifying today. I have a couple of questions regarding clawbacks that I'd like to see if you could help me, enlighten me on how this works. The first one is, you mentioned some of the difficulty in challenging or protesting a clawback. You mentioned it was a phone number. Can you give us some sense of there's other avenues that are offered to you to appeal a clawback other than a phone number? Number one, and, and then the second question, which is related, is how often, and I know this may be difficult, I don't know if you have data on this, are people successful in appealing a clawback? Because I think there's two things working out, working here. One is, obviously, no one wants to see fraud, double billing or insufficient coding. But I'm wondering how successful people are in general when they appeal.
Yeah, absolutely. We can definitely, I can get back to you on the second one. We can actually poll some of our members and those psychologists. Close to 70% that we polled said that they experienced a clawback. We can definitely get some more information in them in terms of how successful they were at resolving it or whether they gave up and maybe why they gave up. So certainly get some more information there. My understanding from my colleagues is that letters usually provide either a phone number or the opportunity to kind of, you know, submit a request to kind of chat online or contact our customer service online. And unfortunately, what sometimes happens, maybe for a variety of reasons, is that, you know, the extent or the time or the labor that it requires to really follow up on that gets to be so extensive that people give up.
Thank you for that answer. And then my final question is this, are you seeing this more as an administrative burden for practices? Or is this something that is really causing such a hardship that people are choosing not to practice in, in certain areas or with certain providers? Or is this just something that's a really big administrative burden?
Yeah, I think it's both. I think the administrative, you know, people that are in private practice that may be a solo practitioner, that doesn't have office support or doesn't have a large billing department to help them with this level of, you know, contact with insurance companies. It is really going to be a make it or break it for them in terms of how much time am I administratively spending to try to not pay back, you know, the, the $100 that I was, that I was reimbursed for a, a, a one-hour session versus just paying the $100 and recouping three or four hours of my time where I can see patients for that three or four hours.
Thank you very much for, for that answer. And thank you for testifying today.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you. Any other questions? Great, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Kathleen Bailey, followed by Dave Hanan.
Good afternoon, Chairperson, Chairpersons Wood and Cabrera and ranking members Pavilock, Demato and Wong and members of the committee. My name's Kathleen Bailey and I'm a producer at the Russell Insurance Agency in Southport. I'm also a director on the Professional Insurance Agents Board. And I'm here today testifying in support of House Bill 6981, specifically addressing the due diligence form. You know, as an agent, we find that the due diligence form is a burden on us to complete and fill out and has become more of an antiquated guideline that we have to follow. All the carriers, as you heard earlier from James, they have their, their guidelines posted online and that's where we reference whether they want to write a piece of business or don't, don't want to write a piece of business. We read them daily, so, and they're updated, you know, instantaneously when the carrier creates new guidelines. So, for example, I had a, a house recently that had a daycare in the home. And, you know, I know that none of my carriers in the standard market that we represent would write a home, you know, with a daycare in it. So given the current process, I still have to reach out to three underwriters who I know are going to say no, just to get an email from them saying no so that I can date my declination and have on file these three declines. I, I feel that the putting guidelines and everything online is meant to try to free up the underwriters' time in answering these questions and, and free up our time as well. So to then have to bother them anyway and ask for denial on something that we know they're going to deny, going to deny seems, you know, redundant and time-consuming for, for both involved. I know that there's concern about the consumers being, still being protected. And, you know, as an insurance agent, you know, we have our own professional integrity that makes us want to write our insureds with standard companies, with the best coverage that we can provide them, which, you know, ultimately sometimes is the surplus market. But, you know, we want them to be covered the best they can when they have a claim. We don't want them calling us and, you know, not having coverage. We, we want them to be protected. That's why we become insurance agents. That's, you know, what are, what we want to do. In all honesty, like commissions, as, as Brad stated, are higher in the standard market. We get the full percentage rather than splitting it. So there's really not much incentive. And the, even without the due diligence forms, the application process, the renewal process, it's cumbersome in the surplus market. So we don't really have a desire to write in it. I get calls sometimes from consumers who, their current agent, they were, you know, non-renewed from the standard market. Their current agent doesn't represent the surplus or didn't want to take the time to do the surplus. So I don't feel that agents are, you know, motivated to write in the surplus market. So I don't feel that consumers will be affected in that way. But thank you very much for your time. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you for coming up here from Southport and waiting around to testify. We did hear from several other agents that write in this space and, and asked a lot of questions. I mean, it sounds like this streamlining of the process is really in the best interest of both the producers and the customers. So I don't have any further questions, anything from the committee? Great, thank you so much for your time. Next up, we have Dave Hanan, followed by Raymond Chase. Okay, is Raymond is not either? Raymond Chase? Great, you're up.
Good morning, Chairperson Wood, Cabrera, ranking members Pavilock, Demato and Huang and members of this committee. This is my first time up here and I am also here to talk about Bill HB 6981, which I'm sure you're thrilled to hear about because I'm probably the fourth one today. What I'd like to do is bring a little bit of a fresh perspective to it on how this affects our business, not only on the floor. So first of all, again, my name is Raymond Chase. I'm, I'm a licensed insurance broker, but I'm also a, a senior executive with Hub International out of Ridgefield. Before this, I was also a senior executive with major regional Connecticut and northeastern insurance companies. I manage several amount of people over six or seven different offices in Connecticut and New York. Again, currently, this law requires us to obtain three declinations before we can actually go ahead and issue that policy with the ENS marketplace. So I'd like to bring a little bit of context to this in that, let's, I want to think about it from a hard market perspective. In our business, we have a soft market and we have a hard market. And they are both defined. And not only does this, does the hard market have placement restrictions for us, the ENS marketplace has changed as well. So the process of planning, of obtaining these written declarations, it's not always straightforward. Some underwriters will provide them official declinations if we only submit the risk fully, requiring us to enter all the client information through the submissions. Even when we already know that the risks does not meet the underwriting guidelines, you've heard that before. Some underwriters simply refuse to provide the written declaration, declinations, instead opting to verbally give them and still make us go through the electronic submission process. From a client's perspective, the requirements can also create unnecessary stress and confusion. Many homeowners take pride in, in their homeownership. And when we have to explain to them that they have three declines from preferred markets and that we have to go to an ENS marketplace, some of them, you know, take offense to that and can have a negative perception in the process. A hard market that we're in right now actually has a lot to do with that particular point. So I was hoping that, that's a fresh perspective for you, that you might have questions for me at the, at the end. Finally, there's many cases where brokers already know, we talked about this, that the risk will not qualify. This also pertains to the hard market that we are in now, again, which is one of the hardest markets that any of us have seen in our careers, upwards of 30 and 40 years. And I can't explain more about what that means. But basically, what eliminating the three declines will do for us is free up resources within our independent agency across the board. We are advisors. We have a lot of folks that have, that have really been damaged by elasticity with regard to pricing. So we have a lot of folks and a lot of clients that we need to be talking to. And the faster that we can process on our side, the more efficient it is to our clients and, and the more that we can advise them for the best coverages. So in conclusion, I strongly urge this committee to support HB 6981 and remove this outdated requirement. I will say that the declinations in the past were there for consumer protections. As one of my colleagues has mentioned, the ENS market has evolved substantially. It used to be a very stripped-down program that we would put people with large losses or multiple losses to. But these programs now have more comprehensive contracts. They have additional coverages and things that we can do to help maneuver in the marketplace. So while, while those three declinations in the past may have provided consumer protection to make sure that we were placing in standard markets, placing in the ENS market today is not the way that it was before. So the three declinations really aren't serving any additional protections for the consumer. We always have the best interest of the consumer in mind, which is placing with an admitted market first. But we are more confident than ever that these ENS markets can also fulfill a need, especially in this hard market where underwriting requirements are also preventing us from placing with the admitted markets. So that's my conclusion. This was my first time up here, so I hope that you have some questions maybe around the hard market, but I appreciate your time.
Yeah, I mean, I was going to ask you. You're going to have to fill us more in on the hard market and please.
I think the people behind me might not want me to do that. It's going to take an awfully long time.
Well, not only are we going to ask you about the hard market, but we're going to ask you to solve our issue with our nonprofits. I mean, you're welcome to talk about all that.
There is a correlation there, by the way.
Yeah, let's hear it.
Also, we all know, we, we all see what's been happening around the country, right? So I mean, we have, weather is the biggest impactful event for our insurance carriers, okay? And now, we live here in New England, so we say to ourselves, all right, well, we're not getting hit by hurricanes or wildfires. But I promise you, we have seen at least double-digit, 100-year forecasted model storms hit the East Coast. So when reinsurers are doing their modeling, they say, okay, they're projecting, you know, X amount of storms will hit the coast. This is our probable maximum loss. And obviously, that didn't work. So with all the hurricanes that have hit over the last several years, let's call it the last five to six years, forgive me, I forget the last one, that was kind of the straw that broke the camel's back. But that coupled with wildfires, they need to spread their rate risk across the country because they can't get it in that specific zone. So reinsurance treaties were renegotiated. Carriers had to take a substantial amount of rate. They had to figure out a way to return to profitability. So they essentially pumped the brakes on new business. They accelerated non-renewals and maybe existing underwriting of, of risks that were on the books. And what this did is almost double reinsurance rates for those insurance carriers. And naturally, they have to filter that rate down to the consumer. That's been the last 12 to 18 months when I talked about elasticity. Clients can only take so much rate increase before they say, I can't do this anymore. And then where do we go? The second component of a hard market now that we're seeing is underwriting restrictions. So they put that pause button there. They said, okay, let's get our actuaries, our product team involved. How do we get back to profitability? Well, it's a number of different things. And right now, there's a lot of different presentations going through the State of Connecticut Insurance Department. But one of them is, you know, will not accept a loss that has a water loss or even one home loss in a preferred market. So that's really hard to place. A new battle that I don't like, which is a battle for a different day, is that insurance companies do not want to take roofs now that are 15 years or older. That is a point of contention that I have and a lot of our agents have that's going through the state. So back to my original point that, you know, having to present a client with three declinations because an insurance company decided that their 18-year roof, which is in pristine condition, that coupled with the fact that they had a loss four and a half years ago and not five years ago, we can't place them with a standard market. And they tell us, well, obviously, I take great care in my home. I bought a 30-year roof, I bought a 40-year roof. And we can't sympathize more. We are risk advisors, we send out hard market letters to try to educate our clients. So the whole predication to what I'm saying is that the declinations are something that really aren't protecting those consumers anymore. It's increasing our workload in general. And we have a lot of people to talk to. And it's, it's a, a point of pride for some of our, our consumers. We don't want them to go to a captain because we try to tell them that they don't maintain their properties when we know that they do.
I thank you for that, that background. And just for everyone on the committee, we tried to do this last year or the year before. We thought we were streamlining the, the process, but we are finding ourselves here today saying that we didn't go far enough. So that's why we're talking about this. So you do have our ear on this. We are listening. Can you just elaborate a little bit more? Can you just elaborate a little bit more, listening to the nonprofit, you know, stuff that's going on here? If you can just share your opinion on that, given your expertise in the business.
Yeah, so nonprofits are not one hundred percent my area of expertise. But what they, what some of my colleagues were testifying about is happening everywhere. So it's not just nonprofits, it's businesses. It's just, again, it comes back to the cost of doing business and the reinsurance treaties. There's a lot that goes into it. Risk management is a big component of those. Beyond that, I really can't comment how deep the algorithms go to try and do that pricing. But I can promise you that it's not just the nonprofits. It is a lot of different business segments. So it's also, it's personal lines, but it's affecting a number of different commercial businesses as well. General liability, excess liability, all those kinds of things.
In other states like Florida, the, the states are forming a either captive or a reinsurance product to kind of help mitigate risk. Is that something Connecticut should be looking at with any of these particular lines or are we not there yet?
Well, in the admitted space, obviously we have the guarantee fund. What we're seeing is in Connecticut, a lot of our high value and or larger insurance carriers are developing their own ENS products, which helped them maneuver a little bit better. In Florida, they have a citizens wind pool, which is basically the, you know, the state run organization that actually took on way too many risks in the wake of a lot of insurance carriers pulling out. So those emergency type funds are there because capacity in the general marketplace isn't there in those regions for specific reasons like hurricanes that are hitting. So is there something that Connecticut can do? I mean, there's always room to look for something on the table. Our biggest issue here obviously is we have a lot of different weather. Microbursts that came through with hailstorms had a lot of problems with roofs. I mean, we're seeing a lot of hardening and underwriting guidelines in the Northeast, really to help compensate for what's going on out West. So I don't really think that at this point, you know, any major or drastic emergency funds would have to go into place. But I just do think that easier access and then easier flow into that ENS market space for us, which we are now more confident than ever with because of their enhanced coverages that they didn't have ten years ago. Makes a lot of sense, you know, for us. It gives our clients options that they can't get anywhere else.
And, and you just hit the nail on the head with the options. Just keep the communication going. I know this is your first, your first time here, but we want to make sure that there are options. You know, we're talking today about streamlining, you know, this declination process. But what else should we be doing to make sure that, you know, there are carriers writing in, in this space? So we're all ears on that. You know, we want to make sure that the people in Connecticut are able, you know, to have different options and not stuck with kind of what we're seeing here. So just we're, you're, you're the boots on the ground.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Any questions? You have a question? Representative Nuccio.
Thank you. Um, so you mentioned something that kind of piqued my interest. You're talking about risk mitigation. So trying to figure out, especially with the nonprofits and such, is it that people are more litigious that something is happening and people are getting sued or that people are making more claims? Like, because it's almost like there's, there's a root cause to why this is increasing so much. And, you know, are we looking at that root cause?
Yes, ma'am. I mean, it, it's all of the above of what you just said. I mean, it is an incredibly litigious environment. I hope I don't have any attorneys behind me. They're going to follow.
Oh, boy, you are in the Capitol. Like ninety percent of the people up here are attorneys, sadly, sadly.
Yeah, it's a good, I don't want the target on the back of my, on my back here. But, uh, you know, it, it's incredible because if you really just look back even ten, twenty years ago, I mean, we can get into Fender Benner's and, you know, our father's cars, I mean, our cars, we could replace the bumpers for five, for a thousand dollars. It was no big deal. Every time somebody gets hit now, it's okay. Can I get something out of it? Okay. The bumpers, by the way, are a lot more expensive. Okay. These vehicles that people still want to pay seven hundred and fifty dollars a year for, for that nineteen ninety four Buick that we might have all had. Well, if we're driving a new BMW X5, I had the pleasure of seeing one of those stripped down at the Hoffman Auto Group Claim Center, went through the entire thing. If you even saw the amount of electronics that are in those bumpers. So when it used to cost a thousand dollars, it's now twelve to fifteen thousand dollars just for the bumper. So these cars are just so extensive. Now, if you translate that into the nonprofit side with, you know, their accidents and experiences. Yes, it is litigious. It's workers comp claims that are, you know, that are going up. It always seems to be somebody else's fault. So I do know that legal costs are a massive component of why rate is also going up. And there's a lot of studies and a lot of information that you could look at. I'm happy to share at a later point, specifically in Florida. And there is third party litigation, which is something that also we really don't like, which is a whole new topic of conversation. I could be here for an hour talking about that, but that is also driving up the cost of legal expense. So yes, I mean, it is, it's not only severity, it is frequency and it is, it is legal.
Yeah, I know. When I see a Tesla on the road, I'm like four cars behind because I don't even want to breathe on the thing if I do, you know? Repair costs for that, like.
And I will tell you that supply chain and like, like for Tesla, supply chain is a major issue. When you look at the cost of inflation, I know we're trying to bring that down as, as a, as a country, but you know, it is still real. I mean, we're still paying wages that are almost double. If you look at what it costs to bring a car to a repair shop, it used to be sixty five dollars an hour for labor. It's now over a hundred dollars. And how sustainable is that? So when an insurance company has to say, well, all right, we're charging seven hundred and fifty dollars or a thousand dollars for a vehicle or whatever it might be for a commercial truck. We can't continue to pay that way. That's why rates are going up because everything around them are going up. The cost of the materials, the cost of the labor, it's just, it's incredible. So it has to filter down to the, to the consumer in the form of rate. But it will also filter down, which we're seeing now, the second side of this hard market. It is filtering into the underwriting components. So.
All right. Thank you very much.
Sure.
I think we're putting in a bill going back to fifty five miles per hour. We, Raymond, thank you for being here. We learned a lot and we want to continue working with you. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thanks for the time.
Next up we have Chief Michael Thurs, followed by Don Holcomb.
Good afternoon Senator Cabrera, Representative Wood and Representative Barry and members of the Insurance and Real Estate Committee. My name is Michael Thurs. I'm the Fire Chief for the town of Glastonbury. And seated next to me is Bud Myers, who's the chief for the Coventry Fire Department. He's also the president of the Connecticut Fire Chiefs Association, an organization that represents most fire chiefs in our state. Our testimony and presence here today is in support of the concepts of House Bill sixty nine seventy three and act concerning health insurance premiums for members of volunteer fire departments and ambulance services. And the proposed change to the statutory language that would allow a volunteer to acquire coverage at the premium cost negotiated between such towns, city or boroughs. According to the National Volunteer Fire Council, volunteer firefighters represent sixty five percent of what we have in the United States. Communities served by volunteer firefighters depend on them to be their first line of defense for many types of emergencies. However, many local volunteer fire departments are struggling to meet the staffing needs. Number of volunteer firefighters in our nation has reached an all time low in twenty twenty. At the same time, our call volume has gone more than three times over the last thirty five years. There are a number of factors that contribute to both recruitment and retention challenges, including the increase in time demands, more rigorous training requirements and a prolific, proliferation of two income families who members do not have time to volunteer. Volunteers invest a large amount of time in supporting their communities. There's no national average on the amount of time a volunteer firefighter gives to their community. Being a firefighter or EMS volunteer is one of the most demanding activities today. A census report conducted by Comptroller Scanlon's office last year identified approximately three hundred fire departments within our state. Of that number, a hundred and eighty five were all volunteer with an additional sixty six departments reflecting a combination of both career and volunteers. The report noted that Connecticut has an estimated thirteen thousand four hundred and fifty firefighters, of which eighty seven hundred or sixty five percent are volunteers. This latest census, when compared to the Connecticut State Firefighters Association's twenty sixteen statistics, reflects a sixty two percent decline in volunteerism in our state. While my department maintains a ninety nine percent volunteer department that offers both a paper call and tax abatement incentive, we too struggle with both recruitment and retention. In the nineteen eighties, our organization had a waiting list. Today it's a different story. With a proposed statutory change that is being proposed in House Bill sixty nine seventy three, we are now given another tool in our toolbox to not only help with recruitment, but retain members as well. So on behalf of the men and women of my department, as well as the Connecticut Fire Chiefs Association, we support the proposed statutory change and conclude by thanking the Insurance and Real Estate Committee for support of Connecticut volunteer firefighters. And we welcome any questions that you might have for either one of us.
Thank you both for being here. I, and I want to thank your town manager for bringing this bill to our attention. I have spoken to many of the volunteer fire departments around the state on this bill and everyone was extremely excited about it. I mean, I didn't realize in statute that we prevented towns if they choose from, from, you know, providing health insurance. So we do want to provide you with additional tools for recruitment and retention. I think the details of, of this would probably lay with the towns on how many hours someone would volunteer. But still, that's, that's for them, you know, to decide. That's for you to say, you know, these are the, you know, requirements we would have to have in place in order for someone to volunteer. So I want to throw it over to Representative Jill Berry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Chief, for being here and being such a great asset to our town. We really appreciate you. What is the average age currently of our volunteers in Glastonbury?
So for our department, there's forty three percent of us are over the age of fifty. We are struggling to find the younger generation. And when we do find them, because of the cost of living or because of other influences in their lives, we're lucky if we can retain a younger volunteer for three to five years. Some move on to career departments, which they move on to other areas. Some just don't have the time commitments because of family needs or the needs for two incomes and things along those lines. So I, I would say, and I can't speak for the Coventry Department, maybe Chief Myers can. We're seeing that the volunteer fire service is aging.
In your opinion, why do you think it's so hard to get volunteers?
The training. I'm starting my fortieth year. When I got in, it was on the job training. They gave me a coat, boot and helmet and said, here you go, kid. Figure it out. Right now we require somebody that's brand new to contribute almost two hundred hours of training to be certified as a firefighter one, which is basically three months of training, depending on which regional school they go to. It's either two nights a week or a full weekend from eight in the morning to five at night on the weekend, Saturdays and Sundays. Both Chief Myers and I, we teach at Eastern Connecticut Fire School. So it's a very intense program which requires them not only to learn psychomotor skills, but cognitive lessons. So that's means hands-on training as well as reading a textbook that's about that thick, taking a practical examination, and if they successfully pass that, then taking a written examination in order to be certified. It's basically the same training that a career firefighter receives. But we do it in phases as opposed to what a recruit firefighter does over fourteen weeks.
What happens in an emergency situation if you don't have enough volunteers?
I think what we're seeing now, and I think it also impacts career departments as well, a lot more reliance on mutual aid from other communities coming in. Knock on this wood, we've been fortunate. We haven't had many fires, but our neighboring towns have. Where Chief Myers is in Coventry, I'm in Glastonbury, we're at the same fire scene. If you look at a map, there's no correlation. There's no connectivity between Coventry and Glastonbury, but where they're serving. Especially, it depends on the time of day too.
I thank you for being here and for your advocacy for this and for the volunteers in our town. And I just want to open it up to Chief Myers. Is there anything that you wanted to add or to say?
I think Mike covered it pretty well.
Okay. Well, I thank you for your service as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, we have Senator Wong's hand up, followed by Representative Ellie Brennan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Chief, thank you very much for your work in, in representing towns within the twenty eighth district that is built on the foundation of volunteer firefighters and EMS. The work that you all do need to be recognized. It's an interesting proposal because as the chair mentioned, we didn't know there was a prohibition. So this bill would address that. But on a second part, uh, do you have the municipalities in your community that supports this? And does it add to the, the budget line item of the municipality?
So I definitely have the support because my manager is the one that brought this up to my attention. As we sit down and we look at a town, I, I cover a town that has about thirty six thousand people that live in it. And we see the decline in volunteerism. So to answer your question, yes, he supports it. I think what we need to do if the bill does pass is the Connecticut Fire Service will need to go out there and promote how it works. And that may include getting involved with different organizations so that town government understands the bill. And then yes, it would become some type of financial responsibility that would, would most likely fall within my department's budget. Again, that's all the specifics need to be worked out on municipal level because everyone could be different.
Right. Now, now they pay a percentage of that now? Is that correct?
No. So we, we have, we do not, we are not able to offer any, we don't offer any type of health benefits to our members. The only benefits that we provide them with is a paper call and a tax abatement. That's the only incentive that they receive.
Okay. So this statute, should it be passed, would apply. Is it a optional and not a mandate to each of the municipalities?
It would be an option. It would be an option that municipality could choose to use as an additional recruitment tool or, and or retention tool for their organization.
Have you, um, do you have written testimony that we could review as well, but I don't see it on file yet?
I, I can submit my written testimony.
That, that would be very, very helpful. Now, have you had any engagement and conversation with, with CCM representing municipalities? And what their opinion has, as one of the original task force people that looked at the, the firefighter cancer program, that there was that tug of war back and forth in regards to municipal additional cost and, and what it would mean. Have you had any interactions with CCM and the, the municipal organizations in regards to this kind of additional proposal? Make no mistake about it. I think it is an important idea. And I think it is going to be an important tool to help recruit volunteer EMS and firefighters that are very, very difficult to, to participate in our community and they're lifesavers. So I make no mistake about it. I was just wanting, understanding the process. If you had conversations with players that would all pipe in should the bill move forward.
So Senator, great question. Here's how I look at it. We get this passed, that it comes back to me and beginning with my town manager and we working together as a collaborate on this and then bring it to CCM. And I think that would be an excellent avenue to get it out to all the other municipalities as well as work with cost too. Because if you look in the cost bracket, they are predominantly, all those towns are covered by volunteer firefighters. So if we can get this language passed, then we can work on a proposal to roll it out there. Again, it's just another tool in the toolbox that a community could utilize. Doesn't necessarily mean that they have to opt into it.
Okay. The, the challenge I have, Chief, is, is that should we pass this, it just doesn't apply to your town. It applies to all of our nonprofits and all of our municipalities that have, not, not nonprofits, but, but it applies to all of our municipalities that have volunteer service members. So I, I, I think I, I'm going to reach out and, and in, in support of this bill, reach out to CCM to get some feedback from them and, and get a better understanding of what their reaction is. And maybe have that conversation as this bill moves along with the chair's discretion as well. Because I think that's an important part of the conversation that needs to occur. But I, but I appreciate you bringing in this forward. And I think it is an important part to provide support and helps insurance services, but also to, to be a tool to recruit and retain volunteers in our communities. So thank you, Madam Chair, for the time to ask questions.
Thank you, Senator Wong. Any other questions?
Yeah, thank you, Chief, for coming today. Senator Wong kind of covered what I wanted to talk about. I represent Bethel. We have two volunteer fire departments. So I understand, you know, the issues with retention and, you know, recruitment. And I guess, yeah, my just concern was just about municipalities being concerned about potential cost. I'll just, I'll give you another chance to kind of maybe talk more about, you know, the benefit of it and also that it's optional. That's, that's great. But just if you wanted to say more on the topic, I appreciate it.
Yeah, I mean, hey, it's, we are beginning to. Yeah, I mean, hey, it's, we are beginning to, we not are beginning, we need to think out of the box as far as how we are going to recruit and retain members, volunteer members, that is, to continue working. Because if not, if we start closing our doors, the only way we're going to open them up is where you hire a full-time career staff, and that's very, very costly. To answer the Senator's question, yes, I'm going to go back and I'll look at Representative Barry, and I'll probably drag her along with CCM as well, because I've had this conversation with her. I'm a third generation. My grandfather was a founding member. My dad just got out, and I'm starting my fortieth year. My son doesn't want to have anything to do with it. So that's concerning, too, when you think it was a generational thing. The other thing is, prior to becoming a full-time fire chief, I was in the real estate market and did a lot of financing of apartment buildings, because I find the younger generation are very transient. They pack up and move all over the place, and that's where multifamily homes are seeing more pop up, because they don't want to, homeownership isn't really there, unless maybe they have a kid, kids, children, rather, and they're only there for the school time. You know, they're twelve years, and then they pack up and they move someplace else. Shamelessly, I just did that myself. My, I've got one child still living with me, but we picked up and moved because we just want to find a cheaper place to live, so. Thank you for, any other questions? Representative Nugio?
I just want to kind of follow up on what Representative Ellie Brennan was saying, because, you know, I'm super supportive of my fire departments all around, and I have the same thing in Wellington. I have some some stations out there that are two, three generations of families doing it, and, you know, we're seeing, people don't volunteer to do much in the community anymore, be it Boy Scouts, baseball, basketball, you know, anything. So my only concern is, on average, an employee of the town will pay fifteen to twenty percent of the healthcare full cost, and then the town picks up the other eighty-five, eighty percent. And having, you know, like twenty or thirty volunteers, that is going to be a big hit to a municipal budget, to be paying eighty percent plus of somebody's healthcare costs for somebody who's technically not an employee. So that, I think, is going to be, you know, I haven't talked to any of my municipal leaders on this, but I think that's going to be the pushback, be it at a town level or anything, you know, it's a big cost for somebody who's not quote-unquote "an employee," right? So I think there needs to be some some talk around how that would work. Maybe it's a higher percent of the premium or something, but on average, like I said, people pay fourteen to max twenty percent of the total cost of their healthcare and premium, which would leave the taxpayers paying the premium for somebody who's a volunteer. But I also wanted to ask you, one of the things in the governor's budget, which I'm trying to reverse here is, I'm looking at, I wanted to get your feedback on, is he removed the one point five million for the fire departments for calls on highways and such. Were you guys able to access and use that money? Is that something that, you know, you're going to miss now not having? I know we've burnt through it every year. About halfway through the year, we were fully expended. So I personally think it could probably go higher and not be removed, but I figured since I've got some fire chiefs here, maybe you could help me answer that question a little.
Well, if you don't mind, I'd like to go back to your first question and just say, the insurance coverage, it's an option. It doesn't necessarily mean that every member would apply for it because they have full-time jobs, where the coverage from their full-time employer may be better than what the town is offering. As a town employee, I actually, I'm on my wife's benefits because they're better. So that would be one thing. The other thing is, it's gonna, there's got to be a metrics that someone needs to meet in order to be eligible for the insurance. And if they don't, it's not like we're going to provide you this insurance. You're going to have to deliver. It's a give-and-take type relationship. So that's what we're looking at is, so maybe for somebody that's like a sole proprietor, that insurance cost is very expensive, like we have a lot of landscapers that are by themselves, it might be a benefit for them, or those younger people that are twenty-seven, don't really have good healthcare insurance, that maybe the town's plan would be better. So I understand that there's a cost, that there's no doubt about that, but it may not be for the entire force.
I would think, though, there's also, if I'm going to count it, and thinking on the flip side, there's also a tax implication on this, because you're not an employee, you'd probably have to get a ten ninety-nine for the full benefit of the insurance premium, and you'd have to pay taxes on that. Because, again, you're not an employee, and you're not paying taxes on, like, you know, when you get an employee benefit right now, you get your paycheck, your insurance comes out pre-tax, and then you pay your taxes on it. It's an employee benefit. They're not employees. So paying this, it's going to almost be like a ten ninety-nine, and you're going to have to pay taxes on that full benefit of that, the premium that's paid. So I think that's something you'd have to think about, too.
So we issue W-2s, because in the eyes of the IRS, they are viewed as employees. So we were told that ten ninety-nines are not acceptable, although unless, I'm not, you probably would know better than I am, if you're a five oh one-three-C-type fire department, where I'm a municipal department, ten ninety-nine may be appropriate. But for me, our members receive a W-2 every year for the stipends that they receive. Now, there's also language in there like Verpa, which the tax abatement was taxable, but because of what was passed in Congress, that is not taxable now, as well as the first six hundred dollars of any type of stipends. So I totally understand that this is where they
There's a big piece, like, if you think about, like, I know in in Tallinn, I think our stipends are maybe like three hundred dollars a month. Honestly, I think it's ridiculous. It's not high enough. It costs more to go to the calls than it does to get the stipend, right? But that three hundred dollars a month, if you're looking at, when they look at insurance from a federal perspective, you're looking at the full cost of that insurance. So they're getting, in some cases, you're going to be getting like a thirty thousand dollar benefit and not paying any taxes on it. So I'm not sure how that would work, because, you know, from the premium perspective and everything else, because, again, you're talking about income tax now on top of, this is a benefit for somebody who's not technically an employee. So I'm not quite sure how that would function.
I totally agree with you, and I think the other thing is, too, FSLA, Fair Standard Labor Act, will also take precedence over this. So I think just by us bringing this bill up as starting to lay the foundation to, as another tool for a volunteer organization to use to recruit people.
I think there's more conversations to be had. But what do you think about the one point five million?
So I can tell you, I do benefit from it. Do you guys a little bit? So there's
Well, Coventry, you don't have a lot of, you don't have a lot of the main road.
Yeah. So in Glastonbury, because we have Route Two, Route Three, and Route Seventeen, we are eligible for it. So far this year, I'm up to thirty-six thousand dollars that we've collected for going on highway responses out there. I know there's other departments. Some departments rely on that money, especially the smaller communities up in your neck of the woods, like in Wellington and things like that, where they rely on that to recoup the cost of running out on Interstate Eighty-four, or Route Eight is, I know the town of Shelton was the highest department last year, because they're always up on Route Eight. In Rocky Hill, I think they're almost at fifty-three thousand dollars. They're up there at least three or four times a week. Right now, only half the money has been spent, according to the state fire administrator. We heard that news the other night. So knock on wood, as long as we don't have car accidents on the highway or any calls on the highway, we won't be overfunded. Last year, yes, there was, three months ago, all the money had been expended. So it helps those departments that rely on fundraising activities, that don't maybe have the municipal, the true five oh one-three-C organizations. It helps their coffers in order to stay in existence. Hopefully, that money gets reinstalled. Our organization, I can't speak on behalf of the President, but I know we are going to write a letter asking that that money gets reinstated into the governor's budget.
Write it this week. We're going, we're doing all of our committee meetings, right? We're having all these subcommittee meetings now, and I'm fighting for that money to be put back in, if not bumped up. So write it this week. Send it in.
Yeah, we had a executive board meeting the other night, and we actually had a meeting on Tuesday, and we did discuss that, that it needs to get re-implemented.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. Any other questions from the committee? Thank you both for your many decades of service. I thank you for coming today. Thank you. Have a good day. You, too. Up next, we have Don Holcomb. Don here?
Greetings, yes.
Hi, Don.
Hello. Good afternoon, and thank you. Greetings to all the esteemed members of the Connecticut Insurance and Real Estate Committee. I am Don Holcomb. I'm the Executive Director of the Connecticut Oncology Association. I live in South Windsor, and I want to express my deepest appreciation to our own Representative Tom Donicki and to Senator Looney for sponsoring this bill. I'm speaking about Raise Bill thirteen sixty-six, an act about pharmacy benefit managers and prescription drug rebate reporting requirements. And I've provided written testimony that speaks to why I do support this bill, but what I'd like to do is take my time to actually talk about why this bill is so critical and why it does not go far enough. There were questions raised earlier today about what are people complaining about PBMs? Why is this important? So there's a passion and an interest in looking at solutions, but this bill will only, it's a drop in the bucket to what we really need to do. And I'm happy to provide further information. But to speak to the question about why do we need PBM legislation, every single state in the country has passed some degree of legislation about PBMs. PBMs are middlemen. When you look at the, what I call myself the golden triangle for healthcare, it's those who produce the products and equipment that help us care for patients. It's the patients themselves, and it's the those who treat and care for the patients. Everybody outside that triangle are middlemen. They may be middlemen with a purpose, but they are middlemen. And PBMs are now becoming one of the poster childs of the most egregious aspects of those middlemen. And the first thing I'll mention is that, as you've heard, most of the testimony here is in complete support of Raise Bill thirteen sixty-six. Don't listen or don't let the few voices that wanted it not passed to obfuscate the reasons why it needs to pass, because we have to get to the heart of the matter. Vertical integration and control over where the patient can obtain a drug, including the choices of which drugs patients are allowed to take, and despite what their treating physician feels would be best for the patient are the problem here. We're concerned in Connecticut about patient affordability. The affordability aspect of drugs and treatment lies on the hands of those middlemen. It does not lie in the hands of those manufacturers or the treating physician. Yes, we do have to always be aware of cognitive of costs of the drugs, et cetera, but half of the dollars spent on prescription drugs are paid out to middlemen. They are not paid out to the manufacturers. So we have to, when a PBM supporter says, we keep drug prices down, we have to take a look at the bigger picture. And the real solution is very simple. What, if we can go back to legislating the patient's right to choose their physician and their pharmacy, and reinforce the concept that medical decision-making belongs with the physician and the patient, not some corporate entity with no firsthand knowledge of the patient, we can eliminate most of those additional fifty percent of costs. PBMs have been making, raking in money hand over fist by taking away patient rights and intruding on the sanctity of that physician medical decision-making. The rapid rise of the vertical and horizontal integration has created monopolies that have done more to impact patient access and affordability of healthcare than any other factor. And why do I say that? The FTC just issued a report in July of twenty twenty-four confirming that PBMs are profiting at the expense of patients. There are articles
You can please summarize.
Okay. I can provide the articles and the report from the FTC. On a national level, everybody is looking at the cost of this integration and how it is taking away patient choice. So I'll just summarize very quickly that we've allowed these beasts to attack our patients, and if we can give control back to the patient and the physician and their doctor in Connecticut, we can remove the teeth of those beasts. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony today. Are there any questions from the committee? Thank you so much for coming today. Up next is Mr. Sam Caliguri.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoons, Senator.
Good afternoon.
Chairman Cabrera, Ranking Members Wong, Pavlo Kdymato, and Representative Nugio. My name is Sam Caliguri. I'm the Vice President, Deputy General Counsel, and Chief Compliance Officer of Nassau Financial Group, and I'm here today to testify in support of House Bill six nine eight one, and specifically Section fourteen of that bill regarding Connecticut's Hypothecation of Assets statute. By way of background, Nassau Financial Group is headquartered in Hartford. Domiciled here in Connecticut, we employ probably four people. We are Connecticut's top seller of fixed annuities, and we're in the top twenty nationally, growing year over year. Section fourteen of House Bill six nine eight one is going to help Connecticut insurers that participate in the federal home loan bank program do so on a level playing field with insurance companies that are based in other states around the country. As you heard earlier today, over five hundred insurance companies nationally participate in the FHLB program, thirteen of which are based here in Connecticut. The FHLB program is very important because it provides participants with low-cost capital to help support their growth and operations. Unfortunately, Connecticut's Hypothecation of Assets statute has been interpreted to severely limit the amount that a Connecticut insurance company can participate in the federal home loan bank program. Just by way of example, of Nassau's top twenty competitors, sixteen of them are based in states that have absolutely no limits whatsoever on their ability to participate in the FHLB program. Three of them are based in states that have significantly higher limits than Connecticut's. This creates a competitive disadvantage for Connecticut domiciled insurers. HB six nine eight one, and specifically Section fourteen, would correct this problem by clarifying that when an insurance company is participating in the FHLB program, it's conducting in something that's in an ordinary course business, something to which already the statute should not apply. At the same time, and as I prepare to close, there are some very important safeguards that would remain in place. First, the FHLB itself caps how much an insurance company can participate in its program. Second, the FHLB does an underwriting of every insurance company that participates to make its own decision on how much that company is able financially to participate in the program. And a lot of times, the caps are lower than the maximum cap available at the FHLB. Connecticut Insurance Department has the ability to closely monitor all of this by reviewing an insurance company's quarterly and annual financial statements. And finally, the Connecticut Insurance Department already has the authority to stop an insurance company from continuing participation in the program if it determines that continued participation would pose a hazardous financial condition for that insurance company or its policyholders, which is why, when you put all of this together, we would urge the committee to support House Bill six nine eight one, at least Section fourteen of it, because it's going to help Connecticut-based insurers be far more competitive as compared to insurance companies that are based in other states. Thank you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you so much. Representative Pavlo Kdymato?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the only thing is, you, and if you can just clarify, you mentioned about acting in normal, I guess, normal course of business, but that's within the context of what's going on is not normal, right? I mean, this is in the context of a, of, I guess, not a dissolution, but like similar to a bankruptcy, right, where they're insolvent, so.
Yeah, no, Representative Pavlo Kdymato, I'm glad you raised this. The bill that I'm talking about is very different than the one you heard about earlier today. The one you heard about earlier today, which I think is covered in Section twelve or thirteen of the bill, deals specifically with what happens to an asset that's been pledged as part of an HLB borrowing when an insurance company goes into a rehabilitation. The section that I'm talking about is completely different than that.
Okay.
The statute that I'm talking about limits how much a Connecticut insurance company can participate in this program. And what I'm saying to you is that Connecticut is one of the few states around the country that imposes limits, and the limit it does impose is extremely tight. And what that does is it takes a Connecticut insurance company that could participate very substantially in an important FHLB program and severely constrain its ability to participate in that program, which means that if I'm based in Connecticut, I have a far more limited ability to participate from this program than I could if I were based in Iowa. Why should Iowa have that competitive advantage over Connecticut? And the reality is, most states have no limits. And so we are at a significant competitive disadvantage as an industry when it comes to this very useful tool that a company has to help optimize its financial performance. But it's very different than that other section, Representative.
Okay. And I know I have actually discussed with individuals about that other section, so I do understand. But you said, how many states, you said, and I can't remember what the numbers were, that there were no limits whatsoever?
Yeah, what I cited was, among our top twenty competitors, sixteen of them are based in states that have no limits whatsoever. And that's just to give you an order of magnitude based on our own personal experience as a company.
And then some of the surrounding states, what are those limits? And then some of their surrounding states, what are those limits?
Many of them have no limits, including Rhode Island, for example. New York has, I think, a ten percent limit. Massachusetts has no limit. I'm doing this from memory, Representative.
Yeah, and I actually think I have it here somewhere, so, because I just discussed this with somebody, so I understand. But thank you for your testimony, I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you for the questions.
I believe Senator Wong, there's a question online?
I do, thank you, Mr. Chair, and welcome back to the Connecticut General Assembly, former Senator Caliguri of the sixteenth district. One of the first things I wanted to ask is Nassau used to be the Phoenix Insurance Company that, that, that has a long history in Connecticut. Is that correct?
That's right. In two thousand and sixteen Nassau purchased the Phoenix Companies, which was in tough shape, and we've completely turned it around and have now turned it into one of the top fixed annuity writers in the country.
I appreciate that, and I want to thank the leadership of the new company to make Connecticut its home. And it's very important to extend the legacy of Phoenix and its community engagement. And, and what I've read in the document and understand about the businesses, as you articulated earlier, is that this is to, to ensure that your organization and in any other Connecticut insurer doing this business can compete on a national basis. And can you elaborate a little bit more how that has impacted your ability to compete with Iowa of all places in the annuity business? And, and it does have an impact for you, to your shareholders in regards how you can maximize your business, that indeed Connecticut is a state that is open for business, that these kind of restrictions, without watering down compliance and all the measures that our Department of Insurance and their quality assurance and fiscal responsibility has, that this is an ability for you to be able to compete and build your business in Connecticut?
Thank you, Senator, and it's very nice to be back, especially having served as a ranking member of this committee in my past. So it's very nice to be here. Let me give you what I think is a very stark example that's specific to Nassau. Based on Connecticut's current limit, the way the Insurance Department has interpreted the law, our Connecticut company, our flagship company, would be limited to about forty million in participation in the FHLB program. If we were in Iowa, our capacity would be approximately one point five billion. Just to give you an order of magnitude, that is a gargantuan difference. And yet at this, and, and, and this is the competitive disadvantage that many companies face if they're based here in Connecticut. And there's no reason to have it when you consider the safeguards that are already in place to make sure that policyholders and the solvency of insurance companies are closely monitored and are protected. I hope that's helpful, Senator.
It, 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 it's, it's helpful, but it's also an alarming contrast to the challenges that Connecticut-based businesses struggle with, of all places. I mean, we pride ourselves in being the insurance capital of the world, but nevertheless, we're getting usurped by the likes of Iowa and Delaware. And, and, and again, let me reiterate that this is not a weakening of the financial standards and solvency standards in which you have to go through our Department of Insurance and regulatory. It just affords that the marketplace and, and the volume in that business has increased considerably in, in the investment marketplace that you'd be afforded the opportunity to be able to raise your thresholds and, and compete and go after the business to build your business in Connecticut. Would that be correct? Let me reiterate again. Can you repeat again the, the importance of maintaining the quality standards, the consumer protection standards, and obviously the solvency standards and working with our Department of Insurance?
Well, I'll be happy, happy to start there because the single most important job of an insurance regulator is to protect consumers. You can't protect a consumer if you can't protect the financial well-being of the companies that you regulate. But we already have a very robust regime for financial oversight in Connecticut. It's one of the top insurance departments in the country. There are already measures that are in place to make sure that insurance companies are closely monitored in terms of their financial well-being. And none of what we're talking about today would impact that in the least. On top of that, Senator, and members of the committee, the FHLB itself has a strong public policy interest. It was created by an act of Congress in the first place to make sure that its participants remain financially strong, which is why they are, they also, on top of Connecticut oversight, they have a cap on how much companies can participate, and they do their own underwriting of each participant in the program, and they set caps for those individual companies based on what they believe the overall financial strength of those companies are or is. And so that's why there's a lot of safeguard already built into the system, and this legislation wouldn't change that in the least.
Well, I appreciate that, and, and your integrity is, is well-recognized by me, and I, I'll leave by saying this, in addition to another hat you wore, you were briefly the, the mayor of Waterbury and restored a lot of the challenges that the city endured. So thank you for your commitment to public service, and I, I enjoyed talking to you. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity to ask these questions.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Senator. Are there any questions from the committee? Thank you very much for coming today for your testimony, and thank you for your public service to our state.
It's my pleasure. Thank you.
Have a great day. Up next we have Mr. Christian Damiana.
Good afternoon, Senator Cabrera, Representative Wood, members of the committee. My name is Christian Damiana, and I'm the Public Policy Manager at Mental Health Connecticut, which is both a direct care provider and an advocacy organization. I'm glad to be here today to testify in support of two bills, HB seven oh three nine and SB one three two two. Both of those bills address critical barriers to behavioral health access and nonprofit sustainability. I'll start with HB seven zero three nine on ending the harmful clawbacks. Mental health professionals in Connecticut are already facing low reimbursement rates, administrative burdens, and delays in claim processing, and clawbacks are making these challenges even worse, and they're directly harming access to care. These clawbacks are not just an inconvenience, they're forcing providers out of insurance networks. Insurers are demanding repayments years after a service was delivered, often with little explanation. This is creating financial instability, and it's making accepting insurance more of a risk than a guarantee. As a result, more clinicians are opting out of insurance altogether, shrinking networks and leaving patients with fewer and fewer options. We see these consequences every day. By limiting retroactive denials, HB seven zero three nine would put in place a necessary safeguard against practices that disrupt patient care. I also want to highlight section eight of this bill, which prevents insurers from passing lobbying costs onto consumers through premiums. While this may modestly reduce costs, it reinforces an important principle. Premium dollars should be used to fund patient care, not efforts to block reforms that improve access. Now, on addressing the behavioral health nonprofits, Mental Health Connecticut has the scale to negotiate competitive insurance rates, but many nonprofits across our state, especially smaller behavioral health providers, are struggling with skyrocketing costs. Liability coverage, vehicle insurance, and property policies have become increasingly expensive and harder to secure, particularly for organizations providing essential health and human services. This isn't just a challenge for individual organizations, it's a growing threat to our entire nonprofit sector. If providers can't afford insurance, they can't operate. The state depends on nonprofits to deliver critical services, and rising costs are forcing difficult choices about where resources go. SB thirteen twenty-two is a necessary step to address this crisis by allowing nonprofit human services to pool risk and access dedicated insurance solutions. I appreciate this committee's focus on the unsustainable cost of insurance, whether in healthcare or liability, and urge you to support these important bills so we can make sure that nonprofits and clinicians alike can continue delivering essential care. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Are there any questions from the committee? Representative Pavlok Damato.
And I don't know if you mentioned, I don't think you mentioned it, but what increases have you seen or experienced?
So Mental Health Connecticut has been lucky to see increases that are relatively on par with what we've expected, largely because of the scale of our organization. We have more than three hundred employees. But we know, and I know you've heard today from many people, including Mr. Shaken, about how these smaller nonprofits are seeing drastic increases far beyond what they've budgeted for, and that's just creating financial instability in the short term, but also something that we expect to get worse in the coming years.
Thank you.
Thank you, Representative. Any other questions from the committee or online?
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony today. Up next we have Liz Dupont. I don't know if she's online. Okay.
Hello.
Hi. Doors all yours.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Senator Cabrera, Representative Wood, and members of the committee. Thank you for taking the time to hear our testimony today. I am Liz Dupont Deal, Associate Director of the Connecticut Citizen Action Group, which has worked for more than fifty years to bring about a more fair and just Connecticut. We testified today on behalf of CCAG and our thousands of members. First, we speak in support of HB seven oh three nine and Act Concerning Health Insurance. In particular, we are in strong support of section eight banning health insurance companies from using ratepayer funds for lobbying. When five health insurance companies tanked a public option in twenty twenty-one with a threatening letter to Governor Lamont, CCAG began reporting on their lobbying and other ways they were diverting money from healthcare. We found that they and industry groups spent one point three three nine million dollars in just the first six months of twenty twenty-one on lobbying. As there is no evidence that higher insurance profits result in improved health, it's hard to see how this lobbying benefits anyone but insurance industry executives and shareholders. We also support other provisions in the bill, such as further defining certifications required for medical peer review, restricting retroactive claim denials, and a call for studies and reports on pharmacist's compensation and coverage. Additionally, we are in support of SB one three six six requiring pharmacy benefit managers and prescription drug rebate reporting requirements. The New York Times reported last year, quote, "How pharmacy benefit managers inflict the cost prescription, inflate the cost of prescription drugs for millions of people," and went on to further report that PBMs are systematically underpaying independent pharmacies, driving them out of business and creating pharmacy deserts. Their presence is growing in Connecticut, as in the rest of the country. Recently, Connecticut's Office of Health Strategy reported that three PBMs, Express Scripps, CVS, Caremark, and OptumRx, provide services for eighty-four percent of commercially insured lives in the state. These three are owned by Cigna, CVS, and United Health, respectively. Increasingly, PBMs have adapted high-list prices and/or rebate strategies that benefit PBM and plan sponsor but can increase the patient cost of the pharmacy, OHS reports. SB one three six six would prohibit spread pricing so many PBMs can't charge health plans more than what they pay pharmacies for services, limit fees so they can't charge fees based on wholesale cost savings, rebates, premiums, and create a fiduciary duty requiring PBMs to act in good faith and disclose conflicts of interest to health carriers, pharmacies, uncovered individuals. This bill is a good start, but we still need to require more transparency and accountability on how insurance companies use PBMs to increase their profits. Thank you for your attention to these matters.
Thank you very much for your testimony today. Are there any questions from the committee? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Up next is Marie Smith.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Co-chairs, ranking members, and distinguished members of the Insurance and Real Estate Committee. I'm Marie Smith. I'm a pharmacist and Professor Assistant Dean at UConn School of Pharmacy based in stores. As a faculty member, my focus is in teaching as well as research is on health policy and payment reform. We appreciate that this committee is very interested in the topic of compensation for pharmacist clinical services. As you heard earlier and you've seen in a lot of written testimony, there are over forty states that have implemented payment policies by state Medicaid programs and/or commercial health plans for pharmacist clinical services. And you heard earlier that Connecticut is only one of a handful of states with no coverage and payment for any pharmacist-provided clinical service by any payer. We have a wealth of information regarding implementation and best practices from our pharmacist colleagues in other states, and this includes the use of Medicaid state plan amendments, direct contracting by Medicaid agencies with pharmacists as providers, and commercial health plan provider contracting and payment processes that use standardized billing codes that would be used by any healthcare provider. Therefore, we are not in a position to support the need for the one-year-long study and report. Rather, we recommend that there's the formation of a working group to develop Connecticut pharmacist payment policies based on best practices for implementing coverage and payment for pharmacist clinical services that's aligned with the existing regulations we have in the state for pharmacy practice. And UConn is taking a leadership role, actually, in this very topic by holding, next week we're holding a national invitational conference that brings together policymakers, payers, pharmacists, and other stakeholders from fifty states to talk about these implementation strategies. What works? What's working well? What really are your pain points still for implementing pharmacist payment and reimbursement? So we at the UConn School of Pharmacy, from the perspective of our faculty and our students, are ready to collaborate with you, state policymakers, state agencies, pharmacist organizations, and other stakeholders so that Connecticut residents have better access to sustainable pharmacist clinical services, have improved population health outcomes, and more affordable healthcare here in our state. Thank you for your time. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Are there any questions from the committee? Representative Pavlok Damato.
So you, you guys are looking for a working group instead of the study?
Correct.
So maybe we can just work on that language?
Yes.
And the event that you said is next week? Is that information you can send us?
Absolutely. Yep, we'd be happy to. I, I think we have, it's an invitation-only conference. We are trying to make sure that we have knowledgeable policymakers as well as pharmacists in these forty other states that can tell their story. And I think we in Connecticut can learn a lot from that, so I'll be happy to follow up. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative. Oh, okay. Up next we have Mr. Ed, I hope I'm saying your last name right, Schreiner?
That's it.
I got it. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Senator Cabrera and members of the committee. My name is Ed Schreiner. I was a pharmacy owner in Waterbury, Connecticut for thirty-five years, so I've been, worked on their PBM contracts. I sold my pharmacy last year, and I'm now the Vice President for Northeast Pharmacy Service Corp., which provides business services to about two hundred and forty pharmacies throughout New England, community pharmacies, I should say, and a hundred and thirteen are right here in Connecticut. And as part of my duties, I do some contracting on a network level with, with PBMs, so I'm familiar with how they operate. As we've already heard, PBMs are vertically integrated companies controlling eighty percent of the covered lives in the prescription drug market. If you look at the Fortune five hundred list for twenty twenty-four, two of those vertically integrated conglomerates were in the top six. That's six. And the third one was way down at number sixteen of the top five hundred. These are dominant private corporations that have given themselves the authority to function as private regulators of the prescription drug market. Recently concluded a prescription drug task force here in Connecticut, led by Senators Lesser and Gordon, and Representative Gil Krestenmara released a report yesterday, and I'd like to just read one sentence from their report. "While PBMs were originally designed to lower cost, recent analysis suggests that their rebate structures and pricing practices have instead contributed to higher drug prices, often benefiting corporate stakeholders rather than patients." So, to my knowledge, pharmacy is the only retail industry where the business, the pharmacy themselves, doesn't set the price paid by their customers. That's what PBMs do with take-it-or-leave-it contracts. And this is why strong legislation is needed. So the focus of Senate Bill one three sixty-six isn't really to save a bajillion dollars from the system. What it is, is designed to do is bring transparency to process and the flow of money, and from there we can look about saving. So that's really the focus of one three six six. We support many of the, the items that are in that bill. Coincidentally, many of them were the same recommendations that the task force came up with yesterday. I do have concern with section two C, which, which requires PBMs to perform their duties with, quote, "good faith and fair dealings," unquote. That's, that's, that's too big a wording to be effective. That's, that's, that's too vague a wording to be effective. I can tell you right now, PBMs are going to argue, "We offer for terms that the pharmacies refuse to accept." PBMs will never truly negotiate a contract, and I can say that from experience, unless mandated to do so. I would suggest the following revisions, and the specificity of this is in my written testimony, but I'd just like to highlight it in case someone had a question. Require PBMs to reimburse all pharmacies at the same rate it reimburses their own affiliated pharmacies. Prohibit reductions or partial tapeback of pharmacy payments after the prescription is initially processed and paid by the patient. So, that's important, that there's no reduction in price after the patient pays their part. The patient gets the full benefit of whatever savings are involved. Pharmacies should be reimbursed using a benchmark price such as WAC or NADAC. If you're not familiar with them, we can talk for an hour about that, but they're basically, they're benchmark prices that are published. PBMs are not required to use those pricing now, so this would, this would certainly prevent price manipulation, so.
Three minutes are up, if you could please summarize.
Okay, so, finally, prevent an appeals process when reimbursement is below cost, because NADAC isn't average, so there are times when even NADAC reimburses below cost. And finally, prohibit PBMs from arbitrating disputes with pharmacies, this is the sole resolution. It's not, doesn't seem important, but it's the way pharmacists would hold PBMs accountable for contracts. So, these seem like a lot of terms that should be in a contract, but they'll never be included without a legislative mandate. These recommendations create a level playing field, improve transparency, promote consumer choice, and reflect true drug laws in the United States. So, again, my detail, there's numerous details in my written testimony, but I'd be glad to answer any questions the committee may have about it.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Are there any questions from the committee? Thank you for, Representative Padraig Tompkins.
And you said all of those suggestions were in your written testimony as well?
Yes, they are.
I haven't reviewed it, okay. And is your contact information as well, if we have questions? Because I, I want to go through those a little more thoroughly with, with the chairs and see if we can get some of that in.
I believe the committee has, has my contact information. There was a, some Zoe.
And the sign up, yeah.
Has my, has my information.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much for coming today. This is an important issue, which I'm sure you know, one we're trying to tackle. We really appreciate your, bringing your experience to the table, and I'd love to learn more about what WAC actually means. It sounds like something that happens in this building when people get frustrated, but I'm hoping it doesn't happen too often, but I really appreciate your testimony.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Up, last person we have is Philip, and Philip, I'm not going to attempt to pronounce your last name, maybe you can help us.
Oh, you got to take a tryout.
What is yours, sir?
Last but not least, my name's Phil Horitzko, and I'm a pharmacist here in Rocky Hill, Connecticut, and I'm also the dean and clinical professor at the University of Connecticut School of Pharmacy, where I've been for the past 21 years. Prior to that, I was at VA Connecticut, and prior to that, I was a community pharmacist. And again, good afternoon, co-chairs, ranking members, and distinguished members of the Insurance and Real Estate Committee. I appreciate you giving me this time. I'll be brief. I do agree with a lot of my colleagues, and I know you've had some of our students today speaking on behalf of House Bill 7039, Section 9 specifically, and I want to express my strong support. While the draft does call for, and I know Dr. Marie Smith just mentioned it, calls for a study of pharmacist reimbursement for pharmacy services, I also urge the committee to take a more proactive approach in forming a working group that's dedicated to drafting actionable policies. Pharmacists are an important resource and critical access point to healthcare, particularly in communities with limited access to primary care providers and no health insurance. And just to make you aware, on January 31st, Governor Ned Lamont was at our School of Pharmacy in reference to the legislation that was passed relating to allowing pharmacists to prescribe and dispense hormonal and emergency contraception. And it's, it's a great service that pharmacists can provide, in addition to some of the other services that Connecticut has been thoughtfully authorizing, including HIV testing and treatment and vaccines for patients 12 and up. But the one barrier to the whole process is, you can't provide services and not get reimbursed for your, those services. It's just not a good business model, and I think everybody would agree with that. So, we do want to expand the ability for our pharmacists to be able to provide this, these type of services, and they want to. So, recognizing remuneration for pharmacists for services, including vaccination administration related to testing influenza, and for hormonal and emergency contraception, is, is critical. And as Dr. Smith indicated, we are one of a few states that don't reimburse pharmacists for this. The other piece I just want to make, the other point, is, our School of Pharmacy, right now, we're celebrating our centennial year this year, and so, we've been graduating alums, distinguished alums who've been practicing pharmacy in our state for a number of years. 70% of our students in general come from the state of Connecticut, and there's a shortage, critical shortage of healthcare providers, not only nurses, but pharmacists as well. We need to keep them in our state, and one of the reasons, from the standpoint of retention and sustainability of our workforce, specifically in the area of pharmacists, we need to be able to allow our students, who become our alums, who become practicing pharmacists, to be able to practice, provide these type of pharmacist services, and be reimbursed for them. That will allow them to want to stay in Connecticut and to be happy citizens of our state. So, again, I urge the committee to support this bill, recognize the pivotal role the pharmacist plays in advancing access to quality care and overall efficiency of our healthcare system. I also submitted a written testimony as well with more detail in it, so you're welcome to view that at your leisure as well. Thank you very much for allowing me this time.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us, and thank you for your testimony. Are there any questions from the committee? Seeing none, thank you very much for joining us.
Thank you.
That concludes this hearing. Our next meeting is...